Well, it's over the last couple of years.
Yeah.
It's been really tough.
Always fantastic.
Everybody.
It's been just phenomenal.
It is true.
Which has been a great pressure. He does. All right, Dan, you ready? Okay. All right, being five o'clock, I'll call the Village Board of Oregon meeting to order for Monday, October 18th. Candy, if you would do the honors for us, please.
Feschen.
Here.
Hilo.
Here.
Bolling.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Stitch.
Here.
Okay, thank you.
Here.
Pardon?
I said here.
Oh, thank you. All right, we're on to number three, which is the approval of the October 4th, 2021 Village Board meeting minutes. I'll take a motion in a second if somebody or two people are willing. Amanda and Derek, any questions, discussion, changes? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, thank you. Let's see, next, we're on to four, which is public appearances, public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including both items on and off the agenda. Just for the trustees, you have in your packet PowerPoint from Ray, Ray Vogler, informational, I think probably all have seen that. We'll probably have Ray back at some other future meeting to discuss that more. So anybody in the audience would like to address the village board, you may do that. I do just want to clarify that I don't know if there's confusion about the library, but the library, our board will not be, no voting on location or anything, we're just going to be discussing and potential voting on the listing sessions. But anybody is free to still come up and say whatever you wish, so come on up. If you just state your name and address for us, that would be great.
Hi, I'm Teresa Nelson. My address is 245 Drummond Circle in Oregon, and I'm here on behalf of the Oregon Nature Alliance. I do understand, as Randy said, that the board is not voting on a location for the new not library tonight, but having watched the library board meeting last week, it's very apparent which site they're pushing for, and that's the site on Alpine Parkway, which is within an existing natural area. While the various library representatives and village staff at that meeting were speaking about the Alpine site, I couldn't help but notice how little value they appeared to place on that space as it exists today. As someone who uses and enjoys this area and greatly values it, that kind of stung. Just because some people do not understand the value of this space doesn't mean it's not valuable, because this space is valuable. It's valuable to the hundreds of people who use it on a weekly basis, it's valuable to the deer who use this site as their home. I actually walked the site yesterday, and not only did a deer run past me while I was there, but it was really obvious that it's used quite a bit, significant bedding areas, a lot of animal trails through the site. And the space is valuable to all of the wildlife that currently lives there, and the notion that the only way this site could be valuable is by building and paving over most of it is absurd. If you allow the library to be built in this natural area, you're saying that we have more than enough space for nature, so much so that we can even reduce that amount in order to build a library, or you're saying that it's not your responsibility to ensure natural spaces are protected within the village. So I encourage you to visit the site, look around, listen. The sandhill cranes picking through the farm fields and our backyards are telling you there's not enough. The turtles getting run over by vehicles on Netherwood and Jefferson Street are telling you there's not enough. And the rusty patched bumblebee, as it disappears from our landscape to the point of being endangered, is telling you there's not enough. So the Oregon Nature Alliance is also telling you there's not enough, and we ask you to please preserve what we do have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yep, come on up. Is that Mary?
Yes. Well, she's a hard act to follow. My name is Mary Norwell, and I live at 674 Heidi Way, and I have not nearly as much to say as she does, but I agree with everything she said. I also went through the 2015 or 17 master plan for the village, and I really strongly feel that when we lose the village center, we lose our soul. And therefore, I'd like to see the city center, village center preserved as much as possible. And I see no reason, I mean, the village, the library board the other night kind of went eh eh with the land that's right over here, but that's not necessarily, I mean, yes, you can build the senior center, you can also build the library on that site, and I really wish you'd give that some consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yep.
Justin Weber, I live at 421 Odyssey Court, that's the duplexes that were built right off Alpine Parkway that face that proposed site, and I'm agreeing with the last two speakers, I think that should be preserved as a park. I know it's a cornfield now, and it's zoned industrial, and I just think that it'd be, I think it'd be better off in CRP or something like that. I think it's a really special place that not many communities have, so.
Okay. Thank you, thanks for your comments.
Hi, I'm Karen Davidson, I live at 770 Scott Street in Oregon. I'm also here to express my support for keeping that area along color Alpine Meadows Park Green, keeping it as a natural area, expanding the wetland area instead of developing it at all, even for a good cause like a library. As our community expands, maintaining or expanding natural areas will continue to be a challenge, but it's an important goal to strive for. Maintaining some sort of natural balance will benefit the area wildlife as well as our community. In addition, the wetlands help filter polluted runoff, there are already flooding issues in that area. Maintaining and expanding the natural area would help mitigate this, which would ultimately help save the village money in the future, and building on it would exacerbate issues that already exist and would increase the amount of polluted runoff. And I don't want to minimize the role that that area could play in helping maintain the habitat for wildlife. I've gone to a pond just north of that area that's actually right by the business park, and there's a pond with tons of frogs, my daughter loves to go look at those, I've seen a snapping turtle trying to cross Netherwood Road, a giant one, so it's probably pretty old, and people had to stop and rescue it. I've seen a painted turtle near the area, I mean, there's a lot of wildlife that need that area. I do completely support a bigger and a bigger library that will better support the needs of our community, but I think moving it from the downtown would be a mistake, it would be more accessible if it's kept downtown, and we figure out how to keep it downtown along with other important services that people need to reach by walking or biking if they don't have a car, such as the senior center. Also, keeping the library downtown will keep it accessible for local school kids, kids that visit the youth center, and seniors. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. All right, we're on to five, which is proclamations and announcements. Martin, or anybody, do we have nothing tonight?
Just one note, the fire and EMS meeting is actually going to be on the 11th, November 11th.
Okay.
Have it incorrectly in there.
Randy, there's one more clarification, the library board meeting is, the date's correct, but it says Tuesday, and we, it's actually going to be Wednesday, so just to point that out to the board.
Okay. All right, anything from the trustees, you think? Okay. All right, we're on to 5A, which is upcoming meetings and events, which we have, we have a list in our packet to put in your calendars. Six is report of village officers. First one is Martin's, village administrator. Martin, I don't know if you have anything, or?
I don't have anything else on my report, but I just want to make a quick announcement. So I have a letter here from the Wisconsin Municipal Clerks Association, and our very own village clerk, Candy Jones, has received her Wisconsin Certified Municipal Clerk certification, which is the highest honor a clerk can receive in Wisconsin, and so I wanted to congratulate her. And so it says here, "The Wisconsin Municipal Clerks Association has committed itself through the certification program to assist and recognize its members in obtaining the education, training, and lifelong experience necessary to help excel in your profession, and you have devoted yourself to meeting this commitment and have met the necessary requirements to receive this certification." So I know it takes a lot of hours of training that goes into this, so I wanted to highlight that and congratulate her.
All right, Candy, good enough. Congratulations. You want to say anything, Candy?
Thank you.
That's short and sweet. Well-deserving, I'm sure.
Well said.
Okay. All right, anything else from you, Martin?
No, I'm good.
Okay, all right, we'll go on to 6B, which is chief's report, I think chief's got a couple things.
Yes, so this is the same type of report I presented to you before, this will be for, sorry, let me scroll up here for a sec. So this is for August, I'm a little bit behind, but it gives you some notable incidents. Keep in mind, the incidents I talk about, I'm very selective on what I pick, I want, I never want to deter a victim from reporting a crime, so things like domestics and sexual assaults and child abuse cases, obviously that information is not going to be in here, but we certainly handle those sort of cases. But there's quite a few notable incidents, quite a few OWIs, we had nine for the month. And then we get into the number of calls for service for August, comparing 2021 to 2020, you can certainly see the differences there. We didn't see as much of an increase this month as we have in the past months for 2021, but it's again still an increase. I chalk some of that up to officers being on some funeral leave and other vacation and other types of leave. The noteworthy items are just the meetings that I've attended that are things I think you'd like to know about, a lot of these meetings are meetings I attend every month. One that was pretty specific, it was Recovery Initiatives Forensic Systems Meeting, so I provided an explanation of exactly what that was. Then I listed a few that staff has attended that was noteworthy as well. One specifically was the School Resource Officer Introduction Video, that was an idea that came from a youth group I meet with that represents some of the diversity in our community. They thought that would be very helpful for any youth citizen in our community, so we were happy to facilitate that, and it went over very well. For the next part of this, it's the training we've attended in 2021. What you've already been provided in previous board meetings is still there, but what's been added since then is in red, and Wisconsin Public Records Law is incredibly confusing with the balancing we have to do, so we send staff to that often that handle open records requests, and we receive a lot of them. That's increasing significantly as we take more calls for service and our community grows. You'll see, we've also had officers, an officer attends sexual assault best practices, and then I, as the Emergency Management Coordinator for the Village of Oregon, have started communicating with WEM, which is Wisconsin Emergency Management, and Dane County Emergency Management to get guidance on good training, so that I can be effective in that role. So you see flood emergency action plan workshops, and, oh, there's more to come because I just got back for some other training. Another noteworthy one, so Dane County is moving forward with what they call ASOM C3 Pathways. This is active shooter response and evacuation type training. They requested interest from fire EMS and emergency management and fire departments for instructors that could instruct in this program. They were very selective in who they picked, and they actually picked one individual from our staff that I nominated, who is certainly very qualified, been training for well over 10 years, and that's Officer Jeremy Hadfield, so he will now work with Dane County Emergency Management and the Sheriff's Office to start training in that. How that, our village continues to benefit from that, is they'll take the training that he will now be certified to instruct in, and we will eventually apply that to the school district if they want it, but then also our local businesses and our fire EMS and other staff. I'm happy to take any questions on that material.
Yep, anybody questions? Yeah, Jerry?
Are there any SRO reports from, out of the school?
So normally, we take that to the SRO work group, and it's...
No, if you, just follow your normal process in there, I'm not trying to push the process, it's just that, you know, school's been in session for a while now, so I was just wondering if, how that process was going.
It's going well, it's been busy, what I can say. The reports that we generate from the SRO work, it's challenging because their open records laws are significantly different, that they operate under, they're definitely more strict, and because it's not a community that we're talking about, it's just a school district, that pool of people narrows down, and it can become more identifiable the more information you release. So we choose to take that a different route and discuss those reports with the SRO work group.
That's fine, thank you.
Other, anybody else, other questions for the chief? All right, Derek?
There's not so much of a question, just thanks for the continued updates on the training.
And we are plugging away, you will see even more as we continue through the end of the year, so we'll keep you on the loop.
All right, thanks, chief. All right, let's go to 6C, which is Director of Planning and Zoning Report, that's in our package from Elise, as to what activity she's been up to, for your information, is she, is that Elise in the back? Yeah, her hair is done, I can't recognize her without her hair being up. So anybody have any questions for Elise or anything? Okay, all right, let's go to 6D, which is Director of Public Works Report, and that's from Jeff, he always has something to say.
Of course, we're just highlighting kind of a little incident that happened, and I've learned since then that it was not Keegan, that was his brother, it was Evan that stepped in the storm grate and had his foot stuck, and our EMTs and fire department were able to respond. This is the concerned father here looking on, and it turns out to be my neighbor, and he sent me this picture while it was occurring, and he said, "P.S., don't tell my wife, she doesn't know yet." But we're able to get, they did a great job, this was a very, very old storm grate, and he was playing around it, stepped in it, got his ankle or foot into it, and his ankle caught and couldn't get it out, and so they did a great job in getting him out, and then, of course, we wanted to be able to fix that situation right away, so we had our crews look at some replacement grates, and were able to kind of come up with something, and this is his dad, and when they were down there soccer again, he, they went over to view it again, and he approved of the installation, so it's always, it's always fun, you know, and he's a great young kid and great family, and just fun to... and he's a great young kid and great family, and just fun to see a good resolution out of that. But they did really have a lot of compliments to our first responders and just also to public works for just being able to take care of it quickly and efficiently.
Okay. Any questions for Jeff? All right. Thank you, Jeff.
Actually, I-
All right, yeah, Carleen, Sergeant.
So you said that wasn't on the map. Is it still functioning if it wasn't on the map?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. There are old portions of our stormwater system that we kind of find over time. Someone will say, "There is an area inlet at a certain location." We'll go out and find it, and then we're like, "Oh, that makes sense now," and we'll go ahead and put that, we'll have our, go out and with a GPS device, shoot that location, and then that kind of goes on our maintenance schedule then.
Cool. Thanks.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you. All right. All right. Let's go to 6E, which is Report on Billing Permits. Impact Fees, Connection Fees, ending September 2021. It was in our packet. I don't know, Lisa, is there anything you want to say, or anybody have any questions on that? Any of those?
I don't really have any.
Okay. It looks like we're down a little bit. We're still doing pretty good.
Yeah. We still have, you know, three more months left.
Yeah, we do.
People pulling-
Yeah.
Single-family residential, so I'm sure we'll, we'll probably meet the 45.
Okay.
Everything.
All right. And then we'll go to 6F, Report on General Fund, Financials and Cash Investments, ending August 31st, 2021. That was also in our packet, and I don't know if, Lisa, do you want to say anything about that, or Martin, or anybody have any questions about, about that? Any trustees, any questions? Okay. All right. And then we'll go to 6, we can go to 6G then, the Village Department Head Staff or Consultant Comments, if anybody has got something they want to share with us. See none. We'll go to H, Village Board Comments. Anybody have anything? All right. Boy, you guys are easy tonight. All right. We'll go to 7, Communication and Miscellaneous Business, which first, A, is Approval of Vouchers. I'll take, how about if I take a motion and a second to get that on the table, and then we can take some, some questions?
I'll move those.
I'll second.
Okay. All right. So Jerry, and then Carleen?
Mm-hmm.
All right. How about questions? Who's got some? Really? All right, Derek's got one.
I got one. Oregon Bike Trail Bike Path, total of $7,803.86. I'm assuming that's a Jeff question.
Uh, where is that?
Which number is it, Derek?
It's in the credit cards.
1314-
13148. It's in the credit cards.
Oh.
Page six. And then also further down there, two more.
What page? Let me just-
Page six. Page six.
I think that was for the repairs that were done on the Rotary Bike Trail.
Oh, yes.
They're from the August credit card statement.
Yeah, so that would have been for the, a lot of the gravel and stuff that we purchased to raise that section of path up.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And Carleen, you said there were two down below?
Yeah, they're just in the same page. They're 440 and 110, probably same kind of stuff.
Uh, yes, they were the same. Yeah, those, that was likely gravel, gravel to man sand and gravel would be my guess.
Okay. Anybody else? Yeah, Mike?
What are water Orion transponders?
Water Orion transponders. Those, those are the things that go on top of individual water meters that communicate back to our system. And we're in a, probably about a 10-year schedule to swap all of the village out with that technology. And instead of having to drive around to read the meters, we'll be able to read, read them all through cellular connections.
Okay.
Big Brother's watching you, Mike.
I knew that.
All right.
We want to know why you flushed last night at 2:30.
It was my wife.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right. So what we're approving, I should have said it earlier, we're approving 340,177.88, and we have a, a motion and a second. And Candy, if you will take a, a voice, vote for us, please.
Ballack?
Yes.
Wunsch?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Fashion?
Yes.
Stitch?
Yes.
Velo?
Yes.
And the years.
Yes.
All right. Very good. All right. We'll go to 7B, which is Library Board Minutes for September 8th, 2021. Informational only was in our packet. I don't know if anybody has any questions or anything. Jennifer is here to answer. Doesn't look like any, or, all right, nothing on that. We'll go to 7C, which is Authorized White Glove Cleaning for Cleaning Services at 101 Alpine Park Parkway, the future Village Hall, in the amount of $260 per month. Staff recommendation is to approve. Do any, do we need any, any information, or I'll take a motion in a second?
So moved.
Any questions on that?
So moved.
All right. All right, Derek. Any questions? Jerry?
Yeah, um, what does it cost, what are we paying now for this building?
What are, for, no, this is for the, the new building.
I know. What are we paying for this building?
Oh, uh, it involves a lot different, um, well, more than this.
More than this?
Oh, mo, yeah, multiple times more than this.
Seventeen.
Yeah, is that seen?
Seventeen?
The only reason I'm questioning is it's, it's split out. But see, that's, that's for five days a week, patrolling the bathrooms. This is one day a week, patrolling the bathrooms and vacuuming common areas over at the new village hall.
You know, at first I thought it was pretty expensive, and now I think it's a great deal.
It's a great deal. But she does a great job, and she's been doing this for the bank for-
I'm done.
For a long time.
All right. Anybody else? All right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
7D is Resolution Number 2147, authorizing, authorizing resolution to submit a Community Development Block Grant, CDBG application on behalf of Habitat for Humanity and Kai Court Development. Martin, I don't know, anybody want to say something about, anything about this? Oh, here comes Elise.
I got kicked over to the kids' table back then.
Yeah.
And just to clarify, it's actually Kai Court, they're naming it after Arlen, Arlen Kai, so. And the, the resolution, 7D and then 7E coming up are both related to a grant that Habitat is going to be applying for. The village will actually be the applicant that would be for the Habitat project off Jamesville Street. CDBG is Community Development Block Grant. This grant money was actually allocated to Dane County after the flooding that happened in 2018 in the Milton Cross Plains area. It's meant to support replacement or addition of affordable housing, and it's not just dedicated to those specific communities, but it's for the county as a whole. There were very few applicants in the first time around, so there's still, I think, about $5 million or so of this grant that's on the table. So Habitat and I met with the representatives from the county a couple of weeks ago, making sure that this project would qualify. So I think they'll be able, especially for some of the infrastructure costs, the stormwater management, there's a pond that's at the back of their project, and that needs to get pumped uphill to Jamesville Streets. If some of that infrastructure cost, if they receive this grant, will go to kind of offset that cost and keep their, you know, lot at the, the per lot price they need to, to make their model work. So these two resolutions and the ordinance are basically associated with just accepting federal money, so the village needs to have these on the books before we can actually apply and then hopefully receive that money from the grant.
Okay. All right. So we'll, we'll take D first, but anybody have any questions before I'll take a motion in a second? Or Elise on this one? It seems straightforward. Okay. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Okay, Mike, and then Derek. Okay, any other discussion? All, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Okay. And then E is the, as Elise just alluded to, we need to have this ordinance updated in order to do, help apply for the grant. Ordinance Number 2116, Amending Chapter 15 of the Village Code of Ordinance Relating to Fair and Open Housing, and the recommendation is to approve as presented. Elise, do you want to say anything else about that?
Just in terms of schedule, I think the grant application is due right before Thanksgiving. They'd be notified sometime in December or January, and then probably receiving the funds in '22. But the fact that that project is already fully approved and ready to go, I think Habitat's aiming to get that started next summer for construction. So that was another plus in terms of, we have a high likelihood of getting this grant money.
Any questions from the board? All right, I'll take a motion in a second. Did you have a question, Carleen?
I just wonder what the difference is between the 106.04 and the 106.50 ordinances? That, what, what's the difference besides the number?
I'm guessing the state renumbered their statutes.
Just renumbered. Okay.
Okay. So I, did, we need a motion in a second? Amanda and Luke?
Candy had something.
Sorry, we actually have to suspend the rules and wait for the first and second readings before we can adopt this. So that would be the first motion.
Okay, so we need to suspend the rules?
Yes.
All right, Amanda?
Make that motion.
And can I get, Jerry? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now we can do the-
Now you can.
Candy? All right. So we're doing, again, doing 2116. Take a motion from Amanda?
I'll second.
Carleen, I think. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. All right. We're on to 7F. Task Order Number 21, 2021-06, Rickert Milkie, in the amount of 5,5,200 for a wetland site screening and full assured wetland delineation for property at the northeast corner of Alpine Parkway. And I don't know, Jeff, do you want to just say something about this before we?
Well, I think pretty much everyone knows where this property is. You know, the, regardless of what happens on this property, a wetland delineation is a, is a, an important piece of information. Wetland delineations can only be done during certain times of the year. We're actually past the time of year where they could likely do a full delineation. However, they can do a site screening that would allow, if, if things continue to move forward with the library, and if this is a site that they end up, they, and through public input, is selected, this would be an important piece of information come December, January, February, whenever that would be. So we did get a task order from Rickert Milkie to be able to do this work, and we just bring it before, before you for discussion and possible approval.
Okay. Anybody have any questions before we take a motion in a second?
Do you have a-
Yeah. Wait. Questions or a second? All right, Jerry?
Do you have a rough description of the area we're talking about, Jeff?
Yeah, you'll see, I actually-
Right there.
Yeah.
Is that the area that flooded, flooded over into the park?
That flooded over into the park?
This isn't Onethwood Road, that road.
No, 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 no. Completely different property.
This is the old school, the school property.
This is, this is the property that the village purchased back from the school district right here. This is, this is the park over here that is West Side Park.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Luke?
Yeah, if we approve this tonight, if we pass the timeframe for this year, is this something that we just get kicked in the spring, the summer?
Well, you get the site screening, is still, can still be done this year. The site screening is more of a, the assured delineator, the person will go out there and do kind of a walk of the property, and with their knowledge, they'll be able to, within a fairly high percentile, determine where they believe the wetlands will be. Now, it won't be able to be confirmed. In order to confirm wetland, you need soils, presence of water, and you need plants. And so that's why it can't be done during certain times of year because you're outside of the growing season. So the, the, the important thing right now is honestly doing a screening to really help identify those areas that any kind of development out there, or any kind of work that would be done out there, would avoid. And then in the spring is when the full assured delineation would be done. And the other thing to think about with an assured delineation is that's, once that's done and submitted, and they call it an assured delineation because it's done by an assured delineator, who is someone who's already been approved by the Department of Natural Resources. So it's not something that technically has to go through and get full approval of DNR afterwards. It's also, once that has been submitted, it is good for five years. So regardless, if this lands that fallow for the next four years, it's still a good wetland delineation to have.
Okay. Yeah. Derek, did you have, yep?
Yeah, actually, I'm, I'm not exactly sure why the rush on this. I mean, just kind of looking at it, I understand where this is going and why, but I don't think it's necessarily something that we need to spend the $5,000 to do just yet.
Okay, yeah.
Just because from the village aspect, we haven't determined where anything is going, so I would actually, and this isn't the motion that's on there, but I would make a motion to table this until we've had further discussion on what the site is actually going to be.
All right. So Derek is making a motion to table. Jerry?
Yeah, I have another question. Would that cause you any problems, Jeff, in getting this done?
Would it, it would not cause me personally any problems. If, if, if that site is deemed as a site that would be developed in the near future, whether that, I mean, we all know, we, we, that that's been a site that has been considered as a potential for the library site. I think it would delay the, the movement of that parcel if that were selected for the library. Just, just why it's said in the memo there.
Okay. All right. So there, on the, on the table is a, is a motion by Derek to table this. Is there a second to that? Okay?
One more question.
All right.
I may have forgotten it already.
Sounds like me.
If we, I guess if we did this and we ended up not putting anything there, is there a benefit to us doing this? Does this tell us anything if we're not going to develop it?
It's always good to know where, where the wetland boundaries are. It would, I mean, my engineering background is always, the more data I have, the, the better it is. If you were to turn this into, as the Nature Alliance has asked for, is to turn this into a prairie, the value as a wet, of a wetland delineation is, is not as much as if you're looking at, if you're going to develop it.
Another question?
Yeah, Carleen, go ahead.
Would knowing these things about this property help with citing something that would have the least impact on the natural areas and the ability to preserve as much as possible the wetland and other?
It's, it's exactly why you would do this.
So it's about preservation?
Well, for one thing, I mean-
I'm just trying to clarify.
So, so when you, when you go to develop a site, if there are wetlands determined on that site, you can either avoid the wetlands and preserve them, or if you discern, if you determine or decide to build upon those, then you have to mitigate for that. And that can either be by building additional wetlands somewhere else, or by buying a wetland credit from a wetland bank that's already been established. I think the goal here would be, you want to avoid it.
Right.
And you just want to avoid those areas so that you know that, okay, we should stay away from that area, that that should be considered as, you know, native, native area and preserve that wetland area.
Okay. Yeah, Mike?
Can you explain your, your thinking on why you didn't do this wetland delineation all the way north to Onethwood, through the cornfields?
Well, I'm focused mostly on what the attention is right now. The attention right now is on this parcel that includes the, where the school site was proposed, which is this weird shaped parcel right here. When I started looking at it, I said, "Well, I'd like to kind of know what's going on over here." And so I just kind of said, you know, I mean, we know this is upland. Everybody knows this is upland, but it's important to include- is upland, but it's important to include it in the whole property there. But I also know that, you know, obviously bringing something like this opens a small can of worms and going all the way to Netherwood opens a larger can of worms. And so at this point, we just, I felt like this is what we need to focus on.
So, so Jeff, I'm just going to say, I mean, from my perspective, it seems whether the library goes here or whatever, it's, it's, it's probably good for us to know what's, is this viable for, for what? That, I think that's kind of how I look at it. I don't sort of see it as us doing it because we're, the library for sure is going to go, go here. I mean, we need, regardless, we need to know if it's a, a good piece of land to build on. Am I correct?
Well, I, I believe it is, I believe it is a good piece of land. I think, but, but any, any type you do, anytime you do a development, you want to be able to make sure that you are staying out of wetland areas.
Okay.
And I'm not moving to table this. Randy, because I don't think that it's a developable piece of land, I think that it is, but I think the speed at which we're trying to develop this, because we've been sitting on this land for, how long now, Jeff?
We've only had this land for a little over a year.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, and I, I don't, but I do know why we're, we're pushing
Sure.
for this all at the same time, which is why I'm thinking that we might be better served slowing down and listening to some of the community before we go ahead and get this done. But that's just my thoughts.
So Derek, you still have your motion?
Yeah, I'll stand by it.
Okay, on the table, or on, on the floor to table this motion. We do not yet have a second. And if we don't get a, Mike?
I do have a, a little further discussion about the, the scope of this. I mean, if I was inclined to put a library out here, I would be more inclined to put it on a, a cornfield, which is kind of a monoculture anyway, and not exactly a high quality piece of, of ecosystem. So I personally would like to see this extended a little bit north, which looks to be like, at least from the pictures I'm seeing here, a lot drier anyway. But that's me.
Okay. All right, so we still have the motion on the floor.
I'll second it to put it up for a vote.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to table 7F.
Yeah.
Can I offer a friendly amendment to the motion?
You may.
Until after the public listening sessions on the library?
How does that throw your timetable, Jeff?
Again, this is not my timetable. It really is, I mean, if, if really the time.
Sorry, delineation timetable, I guess, not so much.
Well, the, the site screening honestly should be done within the next several weeks. That's, that's, that's when, because once things, once snow starts to fly and everything like that, I think it would be more difficult for that person to go out and really get a feel for how things are out there. But, you know, this is, this is your, your timetable, this is your decision on this.
So there's a, there's a village board meeting on the 15th, I would table the, or motion to table it until that 15th after the listening sessions for the library.
That's November 15?
Correct.
Is that going to work, Jeff?
I, I don't think for a site screening, no, I don't believe so.
All right, so Derek, Derek is modifying his motion. Mike, you second, are you, what are you thinking?
I'll still second it to put it up for a vote.
Okay, and then Matt, Matt wants to try it in?
I was just going to say technically when there's a motion to table, it should be to a date certain rather than just table.
Okay.
So I, I think the motion has clarified it's to table until whatever that date was.
What was it, November?
November 15th, I think, was the, the next board meeting.
All right, so that's the motion before us is to table this until November 15th. Let's take, yeah?
One more question. So November 15th doesn't work, I presume if we get snow, but if we didn't get snow, would that still be too late?
I, I'm not an assured delineator, so I, I can't really answer that. I just know that when, in my discussions with our engineer, and we work with them a lot, they were both saying it's very tight to be even doing the site screening for this year already. I mentioned that, you know, if we had it, we could bring it before this, this board meeting. They would probably do this within the next week, would be my guess, if, if this were approved tonight for the site screening. The wetland delineation, that's going to be spring and that's going to be April, May timeframe, when we get into the growing season of next year.
Yeah, Luke?
What's the harm if we delayed, what's the first one called?
The site screening.
Site screening to the same time period as the more in-depth survey.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't have that information likely until, again, spring.
But we probably couldn't do anything.
Huh?
If we, if we chose to put the library there, let's say we did that hypothetically, we need to get that full survey done by the spring anyways.
Correct.
Before we could do anything to the site. So if we waited to get the initial survey done in the spring, it doesn't seem like it would delay.
If, yeah, if, if you waited until the spring to do the full survey, you just wouldn't have that information from, say, 1st of November through January, February, when, when possibly, if this is where selected, site development planning would start.
Yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, so I've been, I've been listening to the debate. I, I really, I'm, I think we should just do this. I think more information is almost always better than less and I feel like it doesn't mean that we're definitely putting anything there. I just, I think now is the time for this particular thing and it's, it's $5,200, which means it's pretty small in the scheme of things. So I'm, I'm probably going to not, vote to not table this.
All right, you ready to take a vote on this? Yeah, Jerry?
Question for Lisa. Lisa, if we vote to do this, but the work does not get completed this year, in other words, it still goes into the next year, do the funds stay in an account from a previous year then?
The board can vote to carry those funds forward to cover that expense in 2022.
All right.
Because we have one item that will be coming forward anyway, and I can add this to it if it's not done this year.
Okay. And Jeff, you don't care, right?
Don't care about what?
You don't mind if all the board does this?
Well, I have my opinions, but.
What's your opinion?
You know, I, I side with, with Amanda on this as far as I think it's always good to have information. I think we're, we're fooling ourselves if we're, if, if the fact that the discussion on this property is not already occurring as a potential site. I think it's always good to have as much information at hand. The, the other thing that comes with this, typically with a site evaluation is a wetland study and also a geotech proposal. I did not bring a geotech proposal before you because geotech can be done any time of the year. Doesn't matter with frozen ground or whatever, a geotechnical proposal or geotechnical work can be done and all that information can be gathered. So that's not really time sensitive. This is really more on the time sensitive type of thing. And I would hate to be holding up, if, if, let's say the community did get together and said, we really love the site, okay? You know, the way things are working right now is trying to, if, if you want to start with site development and construction in 2022 on a library site, and if this site is chosen, this would be a very good move, you know? If the site is not selected for the library site and instead is looked at for a future municipal site, we have five years with a wetland delineation that within five years, no doubt, the site could be developed, okay? If it is never developed, you know, we know that as it's sitting there, we know kind of what we have to work with.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, Gary?
Well, I'd, I'd just like to throw out there with Jeff's last statement that the only reason to push this through would be with, if we're seriously considering it for the library site, given the timeframe, if it's for other municipal purposes, they could easily wait till next year.
Correct.
All right, so let, let me just say from, from me, from my perspective again, I, I, regardless if this is the library site or not, even if it's up for consideration, in, in, in the way that I would vote, I, I want to know if the land can support a library. So that's important for me going forward. Whether it's selected or not, I, I would want to know that. So that's kind of where, where I'm coming from. So let's, let's vote this up or down. So the motion is to table this until November 15th. We have a, a motion in a second. So all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Aye.
And no for me.
So we have four nos?
Who, I'm a no.
No.
Five.
Five.
Okay, then, does someone want to make a motion to approve this as presented? And I see Amanda raising her hand. Second, from Luke, any other discussion? Okay? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Okay, Candy, do you need hands for that? You're good.
I just got one.
Okay, all right, very good. Okay, let's move on to eight. Report of committee's items for, are for discussion, possible action. Eight A is a library board, proposed timeline and public input process for new library site selection. Recommendation is to approve. And Jennifer, do you want to walk us through this?
Sure, so at the last joint meeting, we talked about setting up a framework for community input. I know some of you have already been receiving emails, so that's one, one option for community input. But the library board met last week and so we're proposing two dates for listening sessions. And one is intended to be in person. At 6:30, we heard in the past that five o'clock times were difficult for people after work, so we chose that start time because of that feedback. So the first one is proposed for the 26th at 6:30 in person. And then the second one is going to be via Zoom. And we've coordinated with OCA Media who would be available both of those dates to record, record any parts of those that are of interest so that board members can, library board or village board members or community members can view those either live while they're recording them or archived on OCA Media's YouTube channel for later viewing, just to make sure they're readily accessible. With the pandemic, we did have the second one be a Zoom session so that folks that don't feel comfortable coming in public can still have their comments heard, you know, just like the public comment session at the beginning of the meeting. So one of the sessions is intended to have kind of a informational component and the other one is just for more of a listening, only for community members to speak. Although again, those, the informational component would be recorded by OCA Media and available for viewing. Those sessions would be posted as public meetings, so any village board or library board members who wish to attend in person or during the live session would be able to do that. We would also have, want to make sure it's easy for folks who do not want to speak in front of groups to be able to provide feedbacks. We'd have a written form. Again, we would encourage, we will have a handout ready with more information on providing public feedback or written feedback for people who don't want to speak. Randy's been kindly forwarding on any emails he gets to the library so that we can share those with our board members, so all our board members are able to read every email from members of the public. And we've asked him to continue to do that, so we appreciate that. We would also have a, a forum on, that people can enter their comments directly that we would compile for folks who haven't already taken the opportunity to do that or folks who want to continue to take the opportunity to do that. Just a reminder that the feedback would again be discussed by the library board at their next meeting. And we don't know, amended in the memorandum of understanding, which still has that 249 North Main as the agreed upon site. We would, the library board would like to, you know, work through this challenge by the end of the year if possible for a variety of reasons. But, you know, will need to take as much time as it takes to get to that new location as well, so we want to make sure we're thoughtful about it and moving forward responsibly. And so, you know, we welcome any, any concerns or feedback you have to this process, but we want to, you know, continue to, to move forward and to, to get that feedback and get that information out to the community for them to react to.
Okay, so just one comment for the, the rest of the trustees. As Jennifer alluded to, we're, we're all getting a lot of emails and I realize that they were coming to us and not to who they really should go to. So as she said, I've been forwarding to all the ones that I've been getting to her so that the, the, the library board can see those emails. I think that's very important when we're talking about this selection process and Martin's also getting them too. Yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, I was just going to say, actually, I, I think we are the ones who get it because we're the ones who get the final decision on where the library goes.
But it's important for the library board to see them.
People can send them to both.
Yeah, don't you, don't you agree, Amanda, it's important for the library board to see?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I have no problem with forwarding the emails, yeah, it's fine.
And so any, any comments or questions? Mike's got his hand up and then Derek?
Yeah, first is a comment. I'm a little concerned about the short timeframe to arrange a public listening session. We can't post in the Oregon Observer before next Tuesday. I personally, given the importance of this, would like to see some sort of article or something in the paper regarding the options and inviting people to a public comment meeting. This building's going to be here hopefully for a hundred years. It would make sense to get the input we need to make a smart decision. Second concern that, or a question, I guess, not so much a concern, is what sites are actually on the agenda or going to be proposed with the exception, or, you know, I know Keller Alpine's out there, I know North Main is there, is the existing library site with or without a senior center there? Is Kaiser Park or any other locations on the plate? What, what exactly are you considering and looking at at this point?
So I guess if this board wants to approve what sites are presented, we can talk about what that would look like as well. Right now, the, the sites that we're focused on was the, the North Main Street site, the current library location, and the Keller Alpine. We also included in the library board presentation last week, a number of sites that were looked at, but didn't rise to the top for whatever reason. So, you know, that includes Kaiser Park and JCPark, a number of other locations, either village owned or privately owned. And so if you either want to change the date of those, that first session, I can coordinate with OCA Media to give more time like you requested. I'd be happy to do that if that's a preference of the board. If the board wants to approve the sites shared in the public presentation, we can talk about what that would look like as well. So whatever you want us to do, we can do.
I was mostly curious about the sites, just because I know that there's been a bunch of options floating out there and wanted to be sure.
Yep.
People got presented with, with all the viable alternatives, so we had a full discussion. But yeah, I would like to see this maybe delayed by a week so that we can get a little bit more publicity out for what's an important hearing.
So Jennifer, what would those, or Mike, what, what would the dates be then? You, because I think Jennifer, you're looking for some kind of action from us.
Well, if we did the first one on November 3rd and the one a week later, I mean, that kind of corresponds with what you have. It pushes everything back by a week, but at least we can get announcements out in the papers and things where, where people can attend.
Okay, Jennifer, how is that sound to you?
We can definitely do that. And would you be okay with a week later being on that Tuesday, which I guess would be November 9th? I, again, I want to check if, if your intent is for that to be recorded by OCA Media, it would depend on their availability of having someone that can, can record those sessions. But I can propose those dates if that's what you like.
Yeah, that would be good. Anytime that week would be good. I just want to delay this by a week to make sure we get some notification out there as much as we can.
Sure.
That this will be happening.
Okay, so we're looking at November 3rd and November 9th. What, the board, what about the sites?
Yeah, Jennifer, what were the three sites that you said were being considered again?
The three that rose to the top were the 249 North Main Street site, the current library site, and then the former school site on the corner of Alpine and. and then the former school site on the corner of Alpine and CC. And then there was also a list that we went over at the library board meeting, that was public and privately owned sites that were discussed, but were not as, as ideal as the other three sites we mentioned, for whatever reason.
Yeah, I, I'm just going to build on a couple of things that Mike was, Mike was just saying is I, I, the timeline, as evident from our last discussion, is concerning to me. And the fact that we're only having two input sessions, can I ask how many input sessions we had for the two forty-nine North Main Street?
We had different kinds of input sessions, so we can have as many input sessions as, as the board would like. So if you have a certain number you'd like us to do, or a certain way you'd like us to structure that, we will be happy to do that.
Right, but on the next steps, when we have, the ideal goal is to have the site selection completed by the end of the year. That, I mean, you're really cramming a lot of meetings in there. Would you, I mean, right now you have two, and that seems a little meager to me. And to have the site selection completed within two months, when the last library site took how many years to figure out that it wasn't viable, and that, I mean, that we had been planning on putting that building there. I mean, we had a number of, I mean, years before this even came to, to the village board ultimately. So, and it just kind of goes back to what I was saying previously, this all seems very, seems really fast all of a sudden.
Sure. We can follow whatever timeline you would be comfortable with. We were trying to present something for you to react to. So if there's a certain number of input sessions you would like, or a way you'd like us to structure that, we're happy to do that. Part of the, the, the North Main Street site followed the process that was outlined in the MOU, which is the memorandum of understanding our board, made with your board, about the process we were supposed to follow. And part of that was fundraising for two years, so we weren't supposed to hire any architectural or engineering services until that fundraising was completed, to make sure we had the funds secured to make the project move forward. So part of the, I started three years ago, so part of that timeline was paused for the fundraising. So that's part of the reason that the information about the site wasn't available earlier, until we were able to hire an engineer and get that information. We knew there were challenges, but we just assumed that all wanted to be able to solve them. And so once we were able to do the engineering, that's why there was that delay in that information. But again, we can, whatever you would like us to do for input sessions, we're trying to provide something for you to react to. If you'd like us to do a certain number or a certain timeframe, we're happy to do that. You know, we want to be transparent, we want to get the best information, so if you have suggestions, please throw them out there, and we're, we're happy to do whatever to make that process that you and our board are comfortable with. Our board wants to work together with you. We want to find the best site, we want to do it right. We know, we do have a lot of donors in the community who, who really believe in and have worked really hard to make this project possible. So part of our goal is to make sure we don't, you know, delay things or cause them to not, you know, respect the process. But, you know, if that means it takes a couple months longer to make the best decision, we'll do that. We just, you know, want to hear from you what, what that looks like, if you don't feel comfortable with what we've outlined.
And Jennifer, thank you all for the work that you've done up to this point. I didn't mean to, to, to put that down at all, if that's how it came across. But I would like to, I mean, at least see, like, at least four input sessions on this. I mean, given the, the, the public two chances to, to speak just seems extremely meager to me. And I'd love, I mean, I'd love to discuss with you and the village staff just other options as far as the building site. Because when we're given, I mean, we've already, and I understand the memorandum of understanding still says the North Main Street site for the site, but we're, we've already just, pretty much discounted that. I mean, it's still there, but we're obviously looking elsewhere. That gives them two sites ultimately that we're really discussing at these input sessions. I, I'd like to, I mean, and I'll reach out to the, the staff later on this week, but I'd like to see what else might be available.
Yeah, we've included any suggestions we've gotten from community members or board members. Was it looked at in some respects? We've looked at either the, the pricing, the size, as much information as we can gather, and tried to still, you know, identify whether, you know, that site, you know, kind of rose to the top. So any, any suggestions given to us by board members about where they'd like to see it go has been looked at. Every time we get a feedback, Elise or I or somebody's on access day and looking at the property, trying to find out more information. So we take those suggestions very seriously. We, we'd love to find the perfect site, and we're, we're struggling to find something that checks all the boxes for everybody here.
Ultimately, Jennifer, I don't think we're going to check all the boxes. I remember the number of listening sessions we had because of the trees up on the North Main Street site, and it just, I mean, I don't think ultimately we're going to get every box checked.
Nope.
But I would like to get the ones that benefit the majority of the members of the community, and the ones that are, I mean, given, taking the time to give the input that use the facilities.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to say that we are taking suggestions very seriously and trying to do diligence on any sites that come our way, so.
So I would, I would submit to, to the rest of the board that I would like to see at least two more listening sessions added on there.
So, so Derek, could we do this? Because I know that we want to get this stuff in the Observer. Could we at, at least tonight approve the November third and the ninth one? And then, I mean, I have no, no problem with looking for two more, two more site, two more dates. Amanda, what's, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm in an unusual position, because normally I'm all about public input, more is better, and all of that. But I just, you know, we've been hearing about this from so many people, and I feel like with OCA Media there and with all of the information being recorded, that's something that people, multiple people will have many opportunities to go to, to see the way it's kind of being laid out. They don't have to be in person to comment. They can comment, you know, in emails or whatever. And I don't, I don't want to delay this too much. I mean, you know, public input is important, but I, I, I just don't think more meetings is the answer. People, we, you know, we listen to what people say, we read all the emails. I don't, I don't, I don't see the point. It's, it's two more meetings that I have to go to, because I've told Jennifer before that I want to be at all these meetings, because I want to hear all the comments. That's four more meetings. I don't see the point of that, frankly. I think two is plenty, one in person. That's what we do with major public projects, whether it's a new intersection we're building or whatever. We have, we have a big public, like, a hearing, an input session, and people can contact us in other ways. And I think that's plenty.
I don't know. I'll, I'll respectfully disagree that when we're spending twelve, you know, million dollars. And it, I mean, ultimately, I, I think taking a little bit more time for a little bit more input than we would on our standard intersection would be a good idea. And I, I understand, and I, I, I listen in on the library board meetings that are on Zoom as well, because I do want to hear this, the, the input that we're getting, and we bet we have been getting a lot. But this is something that's a large dollar amount, and I really see this as the only reason that we're putting this on this kind of a timeline is that people have kind of preordained a location for this building. And I don't think that that's, from the input I've been seeing, probably, it, it's, the input I've been seeing isn't going the way that I've been hearing these board meetings go. So I guess I would like to hear more input and see what the community, the, the larger community says just a couple more times.
All right, yeah, Carleen?
I'm the library board representative from the village board, and I've been in on these meetings, and I've been in on those meetings. I don't think that it's a preordained thing. I do think that everything has been considered and will continue to be considered. But I agree that another, another listening session, and I would propose it be on a Saturday, and maybe be a little longer with informational, informational portion to be part of it, because the informational portion is the portion, I think, is, is, um, is very important for people to understand. Because I, I, I personally do value what lands, and I do value natural spaces, and I do want to see those things retained. Preservation is important, and I believe that that is important to the people who are on the library board as well, and to the library staff, and to this village board, and to the village staff. So I, I, I don't think what we're trying to do is rush something just for the sake of getting it done. And I would like to see us make sure that people feel that their concerns have been addressed, no matter where we cite this building. So I would propose at least one more, longer, on a Saturday.
Very much appreciate that, Carleen.
Okay. So I just want to say, from, from, from my perspective, remember, board, the ultimate decision is going to come to us for the location. And from, from, for me, I don't have a preordained site. I want, I want to look at what's available. I want everybody to consider all the sites. For me, even North Main is not off the table yet. We're not there yet. But ultimately, it'll be our, our, our decision. So Jennifer, one question for you. So it looks like November third and ninth, do you want to, because I assume you want us to, do you want to pick another Saturday?
I guess my question for, for the board is, is if you have a specific Saturday in mind, we do want to coordinate, especially if you want a presentation component, we would want to make sure that the folks that would need to be there to present are available, and then OCA Media's availability. So if, if you would want to give us direction for a particular Saturday, we could work on that, but might need to come back to you. If you are open to any Saturday in a particular time period, that would be helpful to give us a little more flexibility. But you tell us what you'd like to see, and we can do that.
So I'm wondering if we could approve the first two, so that the stuff can get into media and all that. And Martin, is that enough time if they come back, was it November seventeenth with a Saturday date?
The next, the next village board meeting is November first.
Oh, November first, so it's just not too far off. Would that be okay? Jennifer, you could check to see.
So yeah, I guess, I, I don't know if you want to approve that specific date, or if you wanted to say tonight, we'd like to include another Saturday sometime in November, or, you know, what, what way you'd like to handle that.
I'd even throw out November thirteenth as a suggestion, because it's two days before the next village board meeting after the first.
All right, so November thirteenth?
And then you indicated you'd like a longer timeframe. What timeframe would you like, if there's any particular way you'd like that structured?
I, and I apologize to everyone out there, I don't mean to offend anyone, but is there a Badger game that day?
I was just looking that up. It's a TBD on, on the sixth, thirteenth, twentieth, and twenty-seventh. So there's not a time of day. I can tell you, though, that it is Northwestern on the thirteenth and Nebraska on the twentieth.
I, I guess I would shoot for
Not a good day.
No.
Probably three o'clock in the afternoon until, I don't know how long of a presentation and, roughly, do you think, I mean, how long of an input session would we like? I mean, your presentation, I don't know how long that's going to take.
Yeah, I guess it depends on what we all include, so.
I would say from three until six.
So for, for library programming, we've had better attendance when we do, like, morning programs versus afternoon. But if you prefer afternoon, that's totally fine.
This is your, your world. If you think that, you know, ten in the morning until two in the afternoon would work better, then I'm, I'm open to suggestions there. I just don't, I don't want to have too much overlap with a Badger game, because I know how sometimes village business gets, can get overshadowed by a football Saturday.
Do we, how far before the games do they set the time?
I have no idea.
So most games don't start before eleven, so if the, if it went from like nine till eleven, if it's an, if it's an afternoon game, then.
I would say nine, almost nine to noon, then. That'll give you, I mean, if you have an hour-long presentation, and then two hours of community input for anyone who wants to show up. If it ends early, it does, but I would like to, I mean, at least see a few hours on a Saturday.
Okay, so Emma, what I'm hearing is you'd like to see some sort of presentation on that Saturday, followed by just two hours of open kind of opportunity for people to come up and say whatever they wish. Is that what I'm hearing?
I mean, it sounds reasonable to me. I'd, I'd ask the rest of the board what they think about that.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's reasonable. I think, I mean, given the length of time that the presentation was last time, I think it, it, forty-five minutes for the presentation part with, with questions, and then, so I'd say two and a half hours would be more than enough, probably.
So nine till eleven-thirty, yeah. And that was November thirteenth?
Yep.
Okay. Jennifer, think that might, hopefully that'll work?
Yeah, I mean, we, we might not be able to have everybody there that we'd like to have there, but we can just do the best we can and, and present with, you know, who's there and what information we have. I think the community input is the critical part, and we would have links to any other presentation that wasn't on the Saturday for folks who really want to make sure they're getting the same information. But yeah, I don't see what, any reason why we can't make that work. I can be there, so even if it's just me.
All right, so we have three, three input sessions. November third, November ninth, November thirteenth, which is Saturday.
The other thing is if it helps, if the online session fills, we could always offer an extra one if, if people, you know, if that one fills up, or if, you know, for some reason we run out of time with folks that are there. So I don't know if you want to plan a second, another session, or if that's enough, whatever you.
I, I think that's probably enough for now. I would, I would say that if we find that we do run out of time on the Saturday, or if any of these other sessions run long, then maybe we consider a fourth one. But at this point, I'm, I'm good with what you, what you have presented.
So Jennifer, just so clarification, so November third will be the, the in-person, correct? And then November ninth will now be the Zoom? And then November thirteenth will be in, in person?
Yes.
Okay.
And just to, just to clarify, I got to make sure that some of the people that were presenting at the in-person one can come to the November third, because that was originally structured to be more of a listening session, for, for less of us talking, more of us hearing. So the only, only challenge we could run, run up across is if the people that, you know, some of the people with architectural experience can't be there, then we might need to flip-flop those, just to make sure. If you're okay with flip-flopping those, if we don't have the ability of everybody, we'll, we'll aim for the November. The first one is the, the in-person presentation, but if we can't have everybody needed at the table, is it okay for us to flip-flop those and do the opposite order? Or do you have a preference?
I would even say that it's okay to delay, Jennifer, but as, as of this point, I've made it very clear that I'm in no rush. So I mean, whatever you, you feel is best.
So Jennifer, for me, it's okay if you flip. I don't care.
I just want to make sure that, you know, that I'm following what we're agreeing on and not, you know.
How do you flip, though, and put the presentation after the discussion? That seems a little unclear to me.
Yeah, you're, you're right, Mike. Maybe we can't, so we'll, we'll just make sure.
I mean, you could, you could adjust the days, you know, I, I'm personally not wedded to whatever day you want to meet or, or have these. I'm more wedded to, let's give a little time so we can publicize them. As opposed to, gee, it's got to be on Tuesday or, or Wednesday. I mean, move them around, in my opinion, move them around in the week to whatever's convenient. You can get the people that you want, and then let's publicize the heck out of it.
Yeah, so maybe if the motion that you guys make includes that flexibility, that'd be great, if that's what you intend. If not, we'll stick with the dates provided.
Is that okay, everybody? All right, who wants to make a motion then to that? Amanda, you want to try?
I guess.
All right.
So, give me input here, because I want to make sure we're getting this right. So we're saying that Jennifer's going to pick three dates that work for the people that need to be there for the presentations.
One on a Saturday.
Yeah, one on a Saturday, two on weekday evenings. And we'll leave the, the dates and times up to her, but the, the time, or the date, at least two weeks out to allow
Yeah.
for advertising in the Observer.
Okay, that sounds pretty good to me.
Two in-person, one virtual? Is that what we're saying, two? Okay.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Carleen. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Yep?
So if I wanted to go back and see all the other options, I should go back and just view the OCA.
I can, I can, I'm happy to email that out to the whole board, if everybody would like to receive that. I can show the list of the sites we've talked about. And then again, if you have a suggestion for another site you'd like to have either evaluated further or included in the discussion, let us know that, and we can make sure we do that. We're trying to be transparent and put all the information out there, so I'm happy to, I'll send that out to the board tomorrow, if that's okay.
Yeah. Thanks, Jennifer.
All right, so now Amanda was first. Do we have a second?
I did.
Carleen, okay. So we got a first and a second? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
All right, we're on eight B, planning commission. B one is conditional use permit submitted by the properties to allow indoor and outdoor commercial entertainment and in-vehicle sales and service in a planned business zoning district at seven eight-four slash seven eight-six North Main Street. Plan commission and staff recommend approval as presented. Elise, do you, do we need anything? Yeah. Anybody have questions on this one? Amanda's got one.
Yeah, I just want, I can't remember, were you guys planning on doing like a, selling alcohol at all? At the, the nod at this, it's a cafe, kind of?
Just eventually.
Eventually. Okay. Okay. So the only thing I'd wanna make sure of is that there aren't alcohol drive-through sales. Okay.
I used to be that when I was in college.
Well, I, yeah, that, that was, that would be a hard pass for me otherwise.
Alright.
Good.
Anything else? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion in a second to approve this. Jerry's and Mike? Alright, any other discussion? Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you're all set.
Thank you.
And then we're on to 8B2, which is the Conditional Use Permit submitted by Craig Culver to allow indoor/outdoor commercial entertainment, in-vehicle sales, and service in the planned business zone developed district at 1053/1075 Park Street. Plant Commission and staff recommendation is to approve. Elise, do we, anybody have any questions? We have somebody from Culver's here if we need to ask anything. Pretty straightforward. Okay, I'll entertain a motion in a second. Derek and Amanda? Okay, any other discussion? Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, Culver's is all set. 8B3, which is replanted Autumn Woods Greens condominium plot submitted by Jerome Klein. Again, we have a plant commission and staff recommendation is to approve as presented. Anybody have any questions? It was in, all the stuff was in our packet? Any questions on this? Elise, we, don't need to say anything? Okay. Alright, I'll entertain a motion in a second. Amanda and Carleen? Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all set. And the last one before we get to the budget, which is 84. And I'm not gonna read all these ordinances, but these are some parking ordinance changes. Number 2115, I mean, these sections that are in your agenda of the Village of Oregon Municipal Code relating to parking standards. Plant Commission staff recommendation is a motion to approve.
Does one change?
Oh, we do, okay. So we need to suspend the rules again for this one. Amanda?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure these are the, this is what we agreed and sent back to the planning commission. These are the same, nothing's changed.
With one minor change.
Yep, so on the memo, just how the planning commission just made one change, that was for the senior high school use, that that would be just one space for every, every teacher and staff member, plus the student allotment of, I think it's 30% of maximum enrollment, that the previous proposal that was brought forward, and obviously, I think it was one space for every two teachers and staff. So just that slight change, we're not building a lot of high schools super often, but that was something the planning commission wanted to note and change that text.
Alright, so I'm looking for a motion in a second to suspend the rules on this one. Derek and Mike, okay? Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, then we're ready to take the plant commission staff recommendation to approve as presented. Take a motion, Mike's motion and Derek? Any other discussion? Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, what, what did we say? No, that's okay. Alright, we got through it. What? Um, Mike and Derek? Elise? Yeah.
Seven oh in favor.
Alright, we're on to nine, unfinished business. Items are for discussion, possible action. 9A is the 2022 budget review, and thank God I get to turn it over to Martin. You wanna break, real quick? Alright, five-minute break?
Everyone's leaving.
Alright, yeah. Alright, Martin, get ready.
Yeah. Funds because of the revenue loss from the room tax moratorium, so we are showing that. And then we are also showing the second revenue payment of the ARPA funds that we're expecting to get in mid 2022. So that fund, we actually have, show that revenue now. We did CLERACT the library fund revenue. We didn't show the debt proceeds for the new library project. So that was just an item that we had to show it on the line items. We are just showing in the budget what we planned to do, which was to borrow 5.5 million next year for the construction. Obviously, there's a lot of things up in the air. We're just showing it how we had planned to do it, and those things can change. I added the section on the expenditure restraint, and I wanna talk a little bit about that. I condensed some of the spreadsheets of the capital projects planned for 2022. Last time I showed unspent funds for the last three years, plus some of the projects that we wanna do in '22. I just combined all of those to better show what things that we're actually planning on doing in '22. Bless you. And then added a little bit more information on TIF districts and that tax calculation, because that is quite confusing. And then just updated the current year revenues, expenditures, and estimates for throughout the budget, just to get the most updated numbers. So we'll talk next steps at the end of the meeting here. Obviously, we went through the taxes last time, so the only difference in this document compared to last time is we are showing that 60,000 is now included. So those calculations have been updated throughout, so you can see that there. And then obviously throughout the levy, you can see the assess, or the tax rate now with the 60,000 included is there. A 3.76% increase to the tax rate. We don't know the total assessed value yet, that has not been published. It was supposed to be published last week, but we haven't gotten that yet. So we're pretty confident that that number, that 1.3 million is pretty accurate. It may change. We may get the right number, it may be fractions of a percentage different, but we're pretty confident. So at November 15th, you might see that tax rate just adjust ever so slightly based on what the final assessed value is. And you can see the effect on an average assessed home on the following page, and again, adding the 60,000 increased that difference ever so slightly from the last time you saw it. So that is in there. So is there any questions on the tax rate or anything like that? Covered that pretty good last time. The one thing I wanted to talk about was the expenditure restraint, so this is one thing we did change in the budget and wanna get your feedback on. So I put some information in the budget explaining what the ERP is, and it's basically a program that in the budget explaining what the ERP is, and it's basically a program that the state has where they're trying to control how much money you're spending. And if you stay within their box, they will give you a reward of unrestricted money that you can use for whatever you want to use. And so when we do qualify for it, we usually get between 30 to 40,000. That's an annual payment. We did already qualify for it for 22, so we are getting that those funds for next year. And we've placed those as a revenue into the equipment and building capital fund so that we can use those to offset any future projects or equipment replacement expenses that we have. That way, we don't have to borrow more money. We have some money actually sitting there that we can use.
And Martin, what is the amount that we got? You said between 30 and 40?
It's between 30 and 40.
Well, I think it was only like 23,000. That's the lowest I've ever seen.
Oh, so we're actually below that?
That was the last time I got it. It was 23,000?
For next year, for 22.
Okay, all right.
It's 23,000.
Okay, all right, 23,000.
Yeah.
So those are showing in the equipment and building capital fund. And then, so one thing to remember too, is since it's kind of a hit or miss, we've gotten it some years and we haven't gotten it other years, and apparently can fluctuate too based on how the state calculates it. We don't want to show that as a general fund revenue that supports operations because one year you may not have that, and you have to come up with 23,000 or 40,000. So it's good to spend it on one-time expenses like projects and equipment. And so we have that there. So as part of this budget process, the calculation is determining if we're going to get a payment in 2023. And so the way that they calculate it is they determine what our general fund expenditures in total are going to be, plus wherever else you may be spending property taxes. So that would be the sick leave levy, which we talked a little bit about, and then the library fund, the library operating levy. And then any levy that goes towards debt payments is excluded, similar to the levy limits, so that's taken out. And you can see our calculation there, or at least under this, the growth of our budget is 2.21%. So on the next page, you can see where we're allowed to be, which is for next year, a 4.9% increase we're allowed to increase. So that's probably one of the largest I've ever seen, and probably one of the largest the Village of Oregon has ever seen. And I think that's being primarily driven by the consumer price index number they use there, which is 3%. And obviously, you know, the thing with inflation and whether that's transitory or not is obviously driving that number going up. So we have a pretty large number, and we're a little bit underneath it. So this kind of poses a similar policy question as the levy limit question, which is, do you want to go to the max or not? Because if you don't go to the max, the calculation resets to whatever you set it at the previous year. And so then that's where you start from the next year. And so this happens sometimes, and so there are ways that communities kind of adjust for this. And what we're recommending is, one of the things that counts towards general fund expenditures is budget transfers, actually. So this is a pretty common tactic where you transfer general fund fund balance, so cash that you have in your fund balance to a different fund for a different purpose. And so what we're proposing here is to transfer 190,000 of the general fund's fund balance to the equipment and building capital fund. And so right now, our general fund has about 2.2 million in unassigned funds. So sometimes people will refer to that as our emergency fund or rainy day fund. It's not as much of an issue in a bigger community like Oregon, but smaller communities usually rely on that for cash flow, just because revenues come in at different times, and sometimes there's big expenditures. So that's sitting at 2.2 million. That is, for our village policy, is to maintain that fund balance between 25 and 35% in the general fund as a percent of the year, the year's expenditures. So that 2.2 million is around 34% of this policy. So we're kind of creeping up to the high point of our policy there. And so if we move that 190,000, that would take us down to about 2 million, which is about 31% of our fund balance policy. So that's still obviously well within our range of fund balance that we like to have. And then we would be able to move that, those funds to the capital fund. And then again, similar to the ERP, using the revenue for that, we can use that to offset any future equipment replacement or future projects, and wouldn't have to use any debt for some of those items. So that's what we're proposing, and that way we kind of max out our expenditure restraint without actually spending any money, and then just putting it into something where we can use it in the future. So is there any questions on that? Any thoughts?
I just have a comment, Martin. It's all very good. This is well done.
Thank you.
It looks like doing it that way will allow us to preserve our fund.
Mm-hmm.
But it also keeps the levy as low as possible, right?
Right. Yep. Yeah, so that's the question that comes up is, you know, when you're thinking you want to max out your expenditures, well, we already know we're at our levy limit, so we can't increase expenses that are tied to using tax dollars. So one of the ways, techniques, I guess, that's used commonly is to use a budget transfer, which is counts towards those expenditures. So
Right.
Under the calculation, it looks like you're expending money, but really, you're just moving it to a different fund to use it for a different purpose. In this case, I think, you know, we have a good purpose. We always have equipment that we need to replace in various building projects, and it gives us a pot of money that we can use instead of having to take out more debt.
Okay, thanks.
And Martin, as you said, we're still in that range that we want to be in. So that's good.
Yep. Yeah, no, we have a very healthy fund balance. Most communities set their fund balance around that 30% of the year's expenditures. It's about quarter year of expenditures, if you ever need it.
Okay.
Any other questions or issues or anything?
Yeah, Jerry? I have one more question, and this will probably be something for later on, but I didn't want it to get lost
Sure.
in the discussion here. Right now, we're looking at a 7.7% increase in levy for village property taxes, right?
Well, so the tax rate is going up 3.76%.
Okay, I mean, how much, when someone gets their tax bill, how much will it go up? 3% or 7.7%?
Well, it'll depend. So it depends on what your assessed value was last year compared to this year.
Okay.
So did your piece of the pie change?
All right.
Did it change in real, did it go higher in relation to everybody else's, or did it go lower than everybody else's? Or did it stay the same? And so you can see that in these examples here. So if you take the average assessed home last year compared to this year, it went up a little bit, about $21,000. You can see the difference in the amount of taxes that that average assessed home would receive, which is about 10%, $179. And you can see another example here that we did, a little bit lower amount. And then obviously, if your home stayed the same value, and it stayed the same value in relation to everybody else's, then obviously, it's a straight across 3.76% increase, just like the tax rate.
Okay. I guess what I'm trying to do, Martin, is my concern is that we're going to tax the less fortunate and older segment of our population, like Mike, out of this village.
Oh.
Excuse me, I have to take a nap.
It's the color you're wearing. No, I have a concern that we're going to be taxing people right out of the village. And what I'm trying to do here is just get a foothold on what the bottom line is going to be in December when we send those bills out.
Yeah, and I think, you know, what you see here in this example one, the average, I think that's a pretty good indicator of where a lot of people will fall at.
Okay.
Probably about 10% more on their village portion of their taxes.
Okay. So that's a good starting point. So 10%. And then we've got the village, Oregon School District. And what does that usually run? Any idea?
We don't know yet.
What is, I mean, what's, is it falling to a certain range, or?
Actually, I do have, I do have something later here.
You do know what I'm trying to do here, you know? Just, yeah, there's some peace of mind. Been feeling guilty about, about what's happened here.
I'd be willing to bet the school taxes will start to get down a little bit because they had that referendum that passed. There's 60 million for the new school, and usually it goes up for a while, and then it starts to taper off. It's like a bell curve, kind of.
Yep.
So their part may stay the same, or even possibly go down a little. I don't know where we're at on this.
Yeah, but again, let's.
So this was, so look at 2020. 2021 is a little skewed because I'm using the, this year's levies, and we don't know what their levy is going to be. 2020 was, last year, you can see how it breaks down.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, the school is a much larger portion of the tax bill comparatively. But you can see that 1693 would become 1873 this year.
Okay.
So that's an average home.
Okay. So that would be an increase of?
$179. And that's, that's that 10%.
Okay, when you said 10%, you were, you were talking about all the taxing entities, that?
Don't, just the village.
Just the village.
Just the village is a 10%.
Okay.
And yeah, and we, oops, let me find my spot. So as we covered last time, this right here really kind of shows the, shows the story. You know, as far as our, our general operations and day-to-day stuff, you know, we're not having too much of a large increase
Mm-hmm.
from the property tax levy, but it's this piece right here, this total levy required for debt services, what's really driving that 10% increase. There's a 36% increase in the levy required for debt service. And that's for debt that we, the village took out this year.
Mm-hmm.
So we got to make our first payments in 22.
Right, right. No, again, if we can just back up a little bit here, what I'm trying to get at is when the tax bills go out, how much of, what percentage of increase will the property holder see?
On the village side?
On all sides.
I don't know. We don't have the, the levies for the other entities.
Hey, but if we use last year's, we could ballpark it.
You got a calculator?
Are you, are you looking for a mill rate?
No, no. Am I not being clear?
Yeah, no, you are. We just don't have the information to be.
I know, I know, I know what you're saying, but, but based on.
So it looks like last year, when we compared 19 to 20 for the school district, the increase was 0.31%, but that equated to $188 on an average home
Mm-hmm.
last year. And the county, well, that, the tax rate went up 0.31%. Just wait. So that's not the...
And Jerry, we'll, we'll have this information on November 15th?
I know.
Because we'll, we'll get the levy amounts, and we'll show that calculation.
So you're going to make me worry now until then, huh? Again, I just, I have a concern that we may be hurting our most vulnerable population, you know?
So last year's tax bill, comparing 19 to 20 on the average home, went up a total of $305. That's with all the taxing entities?
Mm-hmm. Does that have that state credit in there, too?
No.
No.
That's, that's just looking at.
And I know you don't know what that is yet, for sure.
No, we don't have that.
So, but it looks like between all the other entities, taking the village out, the average home went up $260 last year
Okay.
from the other entities. So if we go up 180, 179, you know, 260 is probably a fairly reasonable estimate from the rest of them.
Okay.
So.
No, that's, that's enough. I don't want to.
450, 500, but could be.
450 or 500?
Yep.
Ouch. Okay, something to think about, board. Don't ask me what to do about it, but.
We're, we're building, we're, we're building, you know, we bought a new village hall, which in the long run saves.
And that, that's, that's, that's over here. I'm talking about writing a check here, you know, you know? And not everybody's going to be able to write that check. And so they're going to start moving. And pretty soon, we'll be gentrified, just be a place for the wealthy, if that keeps up in future years.
Right. But, but I guess, I guess to your point, I don't think this is going to be a sustained increase. It's not just going to go up, 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 up forever. It's going up right now because we have these projects, we borrowed more money. But eventually, we're, you know, we're gonna, we'll have a library that's built, and a senior center that's built.
Right.
And it'll start to come down again.
But we still have to staff all those places now. We've got to staff the new library. We've got to staff the new.
Yeah, some operational.
I mean, and that's, that's a big part of the cost of any organization.
Yeah.
And then you have, a lot of departments have got costs that they've been holding down on, holding back, holding back, holding back. And that's going to pop now going forward. I mean, it looks good now. Well, except for debt services, it looks good. I wish we'd had the, when we, when we had the borrowing expert in here, I wish we would have done that and said, okay, let's not make any decisions now until budget time. And we could have circled the wagons now and said, okay, here's the situation. If we do this, it's this much we have to pass on.
So I have a suggestion here, and that would be that the finance committee meet and have these kinds of conversations with those people, and then bring their suggestions here at this time.
I think the whole board should be in on it, because, I don't know, don't you, I mean, I, I would want to be at that discussion, because those are the things people really care about. And I hear what you're saying, Carly. And it's a good, a good thought. But, you know, I mean, if you want to have finance meetings, we, that's something we can sure talk about, if you want to have more meetings.
I feel like we've been having this discussion, though. I mean, I know when we talked about borrowing the money for the new village hall, you know, we looked at whether we wanted to spend 10 million or eight to 10 million on a new building down the road, or if we wanted to spend 3 million right now to just take advantage of this opportunity. So we decided on that. And the library has the funding, you know, it, like, things piled on, and we did talk about it at every step, but there isn't really a good solution other than delaying some of the projects. We're just, it's, it's, there, there aren't good options. I don't have a solution for how to.
Yeah, well, I, again, I just raised the concern I have for the, the people that can't pay a $500 increase in their property taxes. a five hundred dollar increase in their property taxes.
Well, do we, do we, let me ask this of staff or whoever. Do some communities have anything that helps people with property taxes? Like if they can't afford it? I mean, I know you, you can break it into two payments throughout a year, but do, I don't know, are, are there programs to help seniors who, for example, who can't pay their property taxes?
There are, and there are more of them now because of the pandemic. There are a lot of homeowners assistance programs that will assist with utility bills and assist with property taxes, and there are those funds, probably more so now than ever. Within the next couple of years, those are going to be available for people. So, yeah, I mean.
Is it county money or like how, how does that work?
It's, uh, I believe the state has a handful of programs related to homeowners and then, um, the county may as well. I'm familiar with the, the couple that the state has been publishing about. Um, yeah, there, there is, there's stuff out there.
I mean, it's not a great option, but it's an option for people. I mean, is there maybe an information sheet that we could put in with people's property taxes to give them those resources if they're struggling? I'm already making a note.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I apologize for sidetracking your, your overview, Martin. We can go back to what you were.
No, this is a good, good discussion.
If I, if I could just, uh, to build on what Amanda was saying, perhaps we can have someone that knows about these county programs have an informational, uh, session at the senior center at some point? Just throwing it out there as an idea, but if we can coordinate those efforts, that might be helpful too.
So, so Martin, do we currently, or Lisa, do we have to pay our tax bill all at once? Or do we have it where you can pay it quarterly or twice or?
You just, you have to make your first installment, however you wanna make that, by January thirty-first.
Yeah.
And your second installment is due by July thirty-first.
Okay.
But you can make payments from January to July on a monthly basis if you want. It just goes to the county. We only collect here locally through January.
Got it.
And then after that, the county does the collections.
Yeah, yeah.
So people don't have to pay them all at once if they don't want to?
Got it.
But you have to make your full first installment by January thirty-first.
Yeah, and I think it is also confusing when people get their tax bill. They think it's all us.
Oh, I know.
And I know we're gonna remedy, remedy that this year to let people know what portioned out. Cause I know as a trustee, I've gotten emails in the past that, that folks think the, the entire bill is from us.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
We're only a quarter of it typically. Over fifty percent, usually the school district.
It is important for residents to know that.
Mm-hmm.
I only bring it up because I think that's the largest increase that we've ever had. At least in the last twenty years I've been sitting on this board. And I don't know that we've ever had one that big.
Not since I've been here, I don't think so.
No. Sorry, it's a concern.
Jerry, what Carleen mentioned earlier about the finance committee, um, you kind of blew it off, but I think she has a point. Um, because the time to make the decisions on what we're spending our money on and things is when we're borrowing the money, not when we've already borrowed it and, you know, the bills are coming due.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I have concerns over some of the ways that previous boards have spent money. Uh, and we're kind of, and I've expressed a few of those to you. Um, and we're kind of riding out that cycle at this point, but I kinda disagree with Amanda that, that this is gonna crest because I see a lot of big borrowing projects in the future. I mean, we got to finish out the library, we've got the senior center, then we're gonna see, you know, rate increases for, uh, water and sewer. Um, this is going to continue for fifteen years. So having, you know, some sort of cost controls or some way to get this under control is actually important and, and, you know, uh, I'm not sure we've done a good job of it up till now. I don't put that blame on anyone, but certainly having more discussions, um, won't hurt it.
I agree. No, I think if, if the board wants to go back to finance meetings, I'm good. I'm good with that. It, uh, it would certainly eliminate, hopefully it would eliminate very uncomfortable moments like this where you're sitting here looking at a big increase. Of course, I don't know how we avoided this one, you know, it's the borrowing is the elephant in the room.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the, that's the thing that's driving the whole tax rate. Um, and we, we looked at the general fund operations last week and, and, you know, we could see that there wasn't a huge significant change that was occurring, uh, from year to year. Um, so, yeah, I mean, it's the, it's the, the debt service that's driving everything.
Very good.
All right, any thing, any other questions or anything?
No, I, I mean, if, if the board decides they wanna do finance meetings, I'm a-okay with it. Well, just, that'll just mean another meeting during the month. And, uh, I, I, I will predict that most of the board will be at those meetings because they want important meetings.
Well, maybe we, if most of the board's there, maybe we need to have them cause the discussions clearly weren't had enough, perhaps?
Hopefully, yeah, we can hope for the best, we can give it a shot.
All right, so. Uh, so we covered the general fund last time. Um, the only section that we didn't cover too much was police and, you know, Chief wanted to kinda talk a little bit about her budget and some of the things that she's thinking there. Chief?
Yes, thank you. Um, I won't go as much into the budget that's in front of us, but as Rudy and I worked on this budget, and Rudy's truly been the person in the lead on this because leadership has changed so much in our police department in the last ten years that somebody had to remain constantly involved and, you know, kudos to her and thank you to Lisa for, for getting us through because what I'm about to go through is the challenges we faced, and I certainly wanna keep the board in the loop on this. Um, we have gotten very creative with remaining under budget, but we chose, you know, like, so some of the things we've, we've done is, um, we actually eliminated numerous phone lines at our police department, uh, when we made that switch to TDS. Another way we've been able to, to limp through is, uh, the money that was allocated to pay for this additional officer that we haven't been able to fill yet, uh, we've used that money for, for purposes uh, so we don't go over budget in the twenty twenty-one year. Uh, Rudy was tasked with finding ways to slide over money from one account to another, and we were able, we were able to do that, but in very small amounts to survive, uh, what's in front of you now, the twenty twenty-two police budget. Uh, I, I broke these down into what I would identify as three different problems. Uh, problem number one, uh, Rudy and I have met several times to investigate the history of our budgeting that has happened with the police department. Outside of staffing for budgeting, uh, we've been asked over the last ten-plus years to keep at a zero percent operating budget. Uh, back when Chief Pettit was the chief here, uh, when he created the equipment budget, he was told to present a list of what the police department needed, and that list was reviewed, and the typical amount allotted for equipment for the police department under his leadership was approximately sixty thousand dollars. And roughly twenty eighteen, under Brian Newell's leadership, the police department was held to a twenty thousand dollar equipment budget per year, and the dollar amount remained until twenty twenty. In twenty twenty, I was promoted as a police chief, and we were asked to keep our equipment budget under ten thousand dollars in twenty twenty-one. This was equipment we really need, um, so we compiled a list, and we were able to get that number up to fifteen thousand dollars to survive that twenty twenty-one budget. The, the big purchases for us were examples, uh, police radios that our officers wear on their duty belts. Uh, this year, we were given a ten thousand dollar equipment budget. So just to recap, sixty, twenty, ten, but we got it up to fifteen, and now we're down to ten. Uh, this has forced us to get some lower-cost items in order to try to meet some needs. Normally, we would try to seek out grants to purchase additional equipment, but due to the pandemic, those grants are extremely limited and specific, so we won't, won't have much luck there. Uh, the village is growing on all sides, and I appreciate the hard work that's going into the CIP, but I do have some serious concerns about sustaining the operating for the buildings and staff we currently have, not what we plan on having, but what we currently have. Um, I have and will continue to meet with the members of the community. But one of the concerns that's been brought forward quite a few times to me is while the growth is great and the buildings being built are great, is the public safety going to keep up with that growth? Uh, problem number two I've identified. Right now, uh, we staff the Village of Oregon with two officers on the road on Friday and Saturday nights between the hours of five PM and three AM. This was a time designated by prior leadership due to its being a peak time for being busy. Other than that timeframe, we only require one officer on the road for the entire Village of Oregon. I actually asked a community member earlier today, just curious. And this is a person that works with our police department very often. I asked her, how many officers do you think we have on the road at one given time? Minimal, no matter what. Her answer was five. She was shocked when I told her one. Um, my predecessor made a change where we offer now non-mandatory overtime to help provide a second officer. Our, our staff has done a great job of picking up that overtime, but there have certainly been times where we only have one officer on, leaving, and that's leaving one officer work in the entire village. So you, you got a chance to review our activity reports for the months of July and August. OWIs, uh, traffic accidents, and obviously domestics aren't listed in there, but those are the type of calls we have to have a minimum of two officers on for the officer to be safe. Uh, this, this has to change, um, and I'm bringing these issues to you now because I don't wanna dump them on you after it's too late. I'm trying to keep you informed and, um, start bringing these to your attention. There needs to be a two-officer minimum at all times to allow for adequate policing services to the community, to address officer's safety, and to retain officers. Uh, nationwide, people have asked for police to train in de-escalation. This is something we have done for quite some time and will continue to do. But officers are far more successful and have more opportunity to de-escalate a situation if there are additional officers there to help. The minimum needs to change, also because the other agencies that we typically count on for backup, Fitchburg, which you've seen, has been tasked with multiple homicides, multiple attempted homicides. In effect, we even assisted on one of them. Um, and Dane County Sheriff's Office, you can see, they're in the news a lot lately too with some very high-profile cases. Um, that backup is now limited, uh, and they also have increased in calls for service, and they're now facing their own cuts. Uh, to move to this two-officer minimum, we will have to add more staffing, and adding more officers takes us down the path of adding another clerical position and administrative position. The third problem I've identified, and I'll just speak briefly to this. The last issue is a salary gap that exists between the sergeants and the top patrol officer. We did some preliminary work on sergeant salaries for comparable police agencies, and to be blunt, we fall short. If this isn't improved quickly, we will very likely not be able to retain the experienced leadership that exists in our sergeants. And right now, our sergeants are being critically used to field train new officers because our experience is there. That is our field training officers at this point. The Village of Oregon has invested a lot of money into some very good personnel, and it would be a shame to lose them. I sent our preliminary findings to Lisa and Martin today, so this is all kinda, this all came together, this last problem. Uh, but we have met prior to, a few times to discuss this issue. Um, I just asked that the village board take this under consideration as future budget requests will be more substantial, um, for the Oregon Police Department to adequately serve this community. I, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, um, when you say future budget requests, you're not requesting for this year? You're requesting, I mean, you're saying next year?
Yes, so I don't, with inflation, that's already hit us in our training budget with ammunition for training, our software systems, uh, we've been told, expect increases. We'll, we'll try to figure out a way to make it work for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. There is no way we can maintain a zero percent increase. The equipment that we're purchasing with this ten thousand dollars, it's not the equipment we, we really need. It's just what we can make work with that amount of money. Uh, and I know this is a problem for, for other departments too. So I, I don't want it to be all about the police department, but this, this is a problem. Um, and I just ask that this village board, you know, be prepared cause we are gonna have to seek more money in the near future, during your future.
Do you have a ballpark in terms of percentage of what you're, would, would be acceptable long-term?
I, I don't, Rudy, no, I, we're, uh, we're watching closely. Luckily, Rudy's got very good relationships with our vendors. Um, they are already telling her, uh, some of the things we were getting at no cost, it was a mistake, and be prepared, we will now be charged. But the, the two-officer minimum, um, that's another requirement we're just gonna have to seek. Uh, but to do that and still be able to allow officers to have time off, uh, to attend training, things like that, we're gonna have to add staffing too. So I, the percentage, I don't know. Um, when you haven't had an increase for so long, it's hard to tell you what it's gonna look like to add on the inflation.
Okay, when you talk about staffing for a second officer on the road, is, I presume that's more than one person you're hiring than that several, correct?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just wanna acknowledge that I hear the urgency in your voice, and I appreciate how far you are stretched and how the limits that you're going to to, to make it work as it is now.
Thank you, I, I appreciate the comment, and, um, yeah, I think for us to really move forward, um, I'm gonna need your guys' help. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna need to figure out a way to make this work.
I think what you're saying is, um, it'll only work if we make your budget bigger.
Yeah.
Okay.
Definitely.
Yeah.
And these are operational costs. Employees are more expensive, you know, they're, they're ongoing expenses. It's not buildings, equipment and stuff, it's.
What the chief is telling us is that this is gonna, and what I alluded to before was that every department is gonna have this now because of the fact that the village is, is growing at an unprecedented rate, and, uh, we're gonna see these costs across the board. And, uh, you know, it, uh, every time we get another building or build a new building, we're gonna have to staff it. Those costs come with it, so.
Growing fans.
Huh?
Growing fans.
Yeah.
Yeah, this will be, it'll be a pervasive issue in, in all departments, um, and maybe acutely felt in public safety, but certainly, um, throughout is, you know, you add more people and you're gonna have more service demands. Um, there'll be more police calls, more streets to plow, and, uh, more people to serve at the election and, and all those things, so, um, yeah.
And more tax base.
And more tax base. So hopefully, those increases can be spread appropriately and, and not be too big of a burden. Is there anything else on general fund? I know we covered it quite a bit last time. Um, I'm gonna move on to the, to the other funds at this point. So, uh, this is where we left off at the last meeting, special revenue funds. This is page one oh six in the bottom right corner. So most of these funds we can move through pretty quickly. Um, they're mostly, a lot of them are pretty self-contained, um, and very specific, but we're supposed to, to report a budget for them. Um, but we're supposed to, to report a budget for them. Um, so we'll just move on to the first one here, the sickly fund. We did talk a little bit about that one last time, just putting a little bit of tax levy into there. We had a couple retirements this year that created some large payouts. Um, we don't expect any retirements this upcoming year, um, and there's only a handful of employees that qualify for this benefit that are left. Um, anyways, but, uh, we want to make sure that we keep that balance, uh, in that fund so that, uh, when those happen, we have some money to, to take care of that. Uh, the next fund, the, the library fund, um, so this count is set up for the, uh, construction of the new library project and donations. Uh, so here, this budget, we're really just showing, uh, the funding sources that we're receiving for the new library and then any planned expenditures for the construction of the library here. So again, as I mentioned before, obviously, there's a lot up in the air with this project. We're showing it kind of how we planned it, I suppose, earlier this spring. Um, so that those, those things are plugged in there. But certainly, whatever the, the library, or the, the library board and the village board decide, you know, we'll make those adjustments as appropriate. Uh, the library operating fund, um, this is probably one of the more consequential budgets in the special revenue funds. Um, let's see here. So for key points for the twenty twenty-two proposed budget, so this is their operating budget. Um, they proposed a 3.83% increase in their property tax contribution, which is about $26,000. Um, they are eliminating fees as, as part of this budget, which has been pretty minimal in terms of revenue the last couple of years, but that's a trend that's been happening with libraries. Um, some of the county reimbursement funds that we receive, the revenues, uh, from the county are down a little bit. Those are calculated based on usage, so obviously, last year with COVID-19, usage was down. Uh, library board typically follows, um, the village, uh, proposed increase for cost of living, so two percent for employees. Um, and then they're proposing the addition of a new part-time circulation position, which is budgeted to start mid-year. And then really, the rest of the budget, um, and you can look at it on the following pages. And especially in the operational line items, you can see those zero percent increases across the board. So a lot of their operating, um, expenses, they're, they're keeping flat, so providing the same level of service they have this, this past year. And Jennifer is here, so if you have any questions on the library operating, she can try to answer. All right, again, pretty similar to what we're seeing in the other general fund operating, which is, uh, some of the employee costs going up, but a lot of the operational expenses staying pretty flat. Um, we talked about the cable TV franchise fund a little bit with OCA Media last time. Um, so this is where their request is being shown, a three percent increase as they discussed last time. Um, and so you can see what we have here. This is where we put our franchise, cable franchise fees and some of that state aid I mentioned before. Um, and a lot of the expenses just primarily for the services that OCA Media provides to us. So that fund is pretty, pretty healthy right now. Um, and then a few, a few of these pretty minor funds, so Herbson Property Fund, we're gonna inherit a, a sixty-acre conservancy next to the Highlands and Netherwood someday. Um, so here, we're, um, depositing money from the sale of lots in the Highlands of Netherwood. They pay $155 special assessment at the sale. Uh, we got about $5,000 in that fund. So really, we're just showing those revenues coming in, and those can be eventually used when we inherit that conservancy. Uh, drug-free community grant fund, uh, a couple meetings ago, we had a couple items on, uh, related to this. So Oregon Cares, they got a, a five-year federal grant. The village is set up to be their fiscal agent essentially. Um, and so what happens is this is kind of an in-and-out fund. The 125,000 they receive comes in, and then we pay out their requests for, for those expenses, so. There's nothing too exciting going on there, at least financially. Uh, the CDA fund, on the next one, that one's pretty much defunct. The CDA, uh, used to exist here in the village, but is no longer active. And Lisa and I have talked about closing this fund off. It looks like it just collects a couple dollars of interest every year. Um, so the plan, I think, is to close that one out. Uh, Senior Center Donations Fund on the next page. Again, these are just showing revenues that we received for donations from the Senior Center. Um, a lot of these donations, uh, are starting to trend toward the future building projects, so just kind of estimating, um, what kind of revenues we could, and donations we could expect from that. So obviously, no expenses, so just showing those dollars coming in. Uh, preserved water tower fund, again, a very specific use, just showing a couple minor donations and things that come in for the water tower. Um, and then if there's any fundraisers or anything like that, there's supply expenses and things, so. That's that, pretty small. And then, uh, the next one, Herman Cemetery Trust Fund. Uh, again, this is one of those really small funds. We got a donation several years ago, uh, the family agreed. Yes, yes, the family, apparently, staff tracked down the family a few years back and agreed that we could spend down all of those funds, um, so we don't have to keep track of them anymore. And so we're, we're working on spending those down. If you, if you don't think the staff is frugal there, we've had about $600 that we've been trying to spend for the last couple of years, so. Yeah, once we spend those $600, we can close that account. Uh, the police special revenue, special revenue fund, uh, again, this is for, um, some of the community events and things that the police department does, so Shop With A Cop, the medical drop box that they operate, um, some other community policing activities that they may engage in. Uh, any donations from the public on some of those programs are put into this fund, and then any supplies or expenses that occur with, with those types of events and activities happen and kind of within this self-contained budget. Uh, the next one is the refuse and recycling pickup. Uh, obviously, this is pretty self-explanatory. Um, our recycling charges and refuse charges get put in here as revenue off, uh, the utility bills. And then our, our contract with Palatary, all of our costs come out of this budget. So that's pretty set. Room tax fund, um, again, as I mentioned earlier, showing that transfer in to make up for that revenue loss. Um, but again, revenues are from the room tax, uh, that we receive. And then expenses are, um, some of it goes to our time, administrative time, and then, uh, to the tourism commission to spend on promotion and economic development stuff. The canine fund, uh, again, pretty self-explanatory. It's for the canine units, so, um, this is a pretty successful fund. The, uh, canine unit is entirely funded through donations. So we received, uh, actually, I think it was almost $18,000 in donations this year. Um, and then all of the expenses related to the canine unit, training, the operating supplies, um, all of that comes out of this budget from those funds. And then, of course, we're gonna be hopefully onboarding a new, uh, canine next year, so we're showing $11,000 for, uh, the purchase of a new dog. Uh, the next one is workforce housing fund, we're calling it. So this was created from a closing TID. Uh, some of the surplus funds were put into this, uh, fund to use towards affordable housing projects. Um, and so I believe we used it on one project. Genesis Housing did a, did some work last year, and we were able to give them $168,000 from this fund. Um, for next year, um, we have the Habitat Project, um, that we're assisting them on with the Community Development Block Grant, which we talked about earlier in this meeting. Um, and so we're proposing about $5,000 in funds just to help cover staff time or any other expenses we have related to that project. And then, uh, the fund has had about $340,000 at the, at year-end 2020. So it should be pretty close to the same at the end of this year. So those are available for any qualifying projects. Um, and then we set up a fund for the American Rescue Plan Act. So again, this just shows the revenues coming in from, from this, uh, grant. We got the half million this year, and then the half million coming in next year. We're showing the transfer out to the room tax, so that's 25,000. Uh, but then again, we talked last week about kind of letting the rest of those funds be a little bit dormant for now, um, and maybe targeting those for some sort of water and sewer project. Um, maybe talking about that in the spring when we get close to, um, the time that we borrow funds and the time that we look at our capital improvement plan.
Martin?
Yeah.
Excuse me for a second. Is that, any, any of those funds projected to replace the lead services that are in still in the village?
They could be, yep. So if we want, when we get to next spring, um, we'll look at the upcoming five-year plan again. And, uh, we'll look at what we're planning on borrowing for, for next year. And we can, we can look at, do we want to accelerate some of those projects and use some of these funds?
Okay.
And so that would be the time that we.
I mean, it's great we've got these funds, so.
Mm-hmm.
It's, uh, it'd be great to get that lead stuff out on the ground.
Yep, that would be a perfect use for these funds. Uh, and then we had a, a public art fund that we established this year. So Randy got a donation, a $10,000 donation to be took, put towards, uh, public art purposes. So we, uh, created a fund for that. That thumb is not in the Village of Oregon, just so you know.
This could be a nice picture.
Yeah.
I thought Jeff already bought it.
It is, it is a thumb, it is not a different finger.
I was gonna say.
Yeah. So, so that's there, that's showing, uh, the $10,000 coming in for that. And if we have some, uh, public art initiatives or ideas or things that we want to put some of that money towards, we can, we can tap.
So Martin, I'll be, I'll be coming with, with the help of staff, some proposal for that in the near future.
Very good. All right, so, that's special revenue funds. Any questions or, or anything like that? Most of them are pretty, pretty specific and pretty straightforward.
Pretty special.
Pretty special, yes. All right. Moving along, so tax increment finance districts. So, um, we of course have the three TIF districts that we have in the village. Uh, and so I go over each of those and any key items for the budget, uh, this upcoming year. So getting into TIF three, um, TIF three is kind of a lame duck. We overlaid TIF five, um, and so there's no planned expenditures for TIF three remaining. Um, they just, the fund just needs to pay off its remaining debt service. And so that's really the only thing that's happening in that fund. TIF four, um, the only noteworthy item, I would say, is we did borrow funds to make improvements to the Janesville Perry intersection this year. That's probably the only, um, project that would be planned for next year is just using those funds, and those will be expended from, from TID four. Uh, TIF five, um, again, nothing really major in terms of projects happening for next year. Um, we did borrow some funds, uh, a couple of years ago for some downtown weed binding signage. And I know we're talking about trying to get that project done. It's almost, it was designed and, and almost completed. We just need to, to actually implement it and carry out. So that may be done next year and maybe even yet this year if there's, there's some time, but, um, that's really the only.
Next year.
Next year, there you go. Those, that's really the only project, uh, slated for, for TID five for next year. You can see a map of our TIDs there. You can see how that, uh, TID five is completely overlaying, uh, TID three there.
Martin, can I ask a couple of questions?
You're good, yeah.
So TID three, does that actually ever pay for itself? Or would, will that end up being closed with us still in debt and owing on it?
So, yeah, so here is the cash flow for TID three on page. Uh, it looks like I got messed up here. One fifty-seven. So... Right now, the TID owes the general fund, it looks like 2.9 million. So it looks like it'll be finished paying off its debt service in 2028. And then at that point, the fund can, can, could be closed, it could be closed at that point. Or we could keep it open and have the fund continue to pay back the general fund what the general fund advanced.
So, but the general fund still, I mean, the fact we had to advance that still makes us TIF upside down.
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah, yeah, no, there's.
So even at the end of this in 2039, we're still not good.
Yeah, it looks like there would be, what is it? About two, 276,000 left owed at the end of the, at the end of the closure.
So, TID four, we're in a different situation. We're still supporting TID four.
Mm-hmm.
It's not self-funding yet.
Yep.
But we foresee it someday becoming self-funding.
Yep, yeah, there's been quite a few large projects that are gonna be coming on to the assessed value of that TID. First, it was the hotel. Then it was the, the coil apartments are gonna come on in full. And then Lake Stone is gonna come on in full. And then, uh, Culvers, yeah. And then Bike and Brew, if that, if that's a thing. Um, so that will grow quite a bit. And you can see in that cash flow on page. One sixty-three. You can see that the estimate of tax increment that's gonna come in is gonna go up quite a bit in the next couple of years. Um, but a lot of that is going to be expended proportionally on incentives that are going to be paid back to those developments. But, so it looks like the general fund, this is, is Eller's, is cash flow projection. General fund is still slated to support the district through 2027. And then in 2029, it'll start paying it back, and it's projected to pay it back in full, at least, was it like four, four or five years before it closes?
And this is really a steady state on, on, uh, I mean, they're only really projecting growth through 2025 and then.
Yeah.
Just to be conservative, I'm guessing.
Yeah, they're really conservative in how they, they put that together. And yeah, they pretty much just kept it flat from 2025 on. But I'm sure we can reason that they expect a little bit of growth.
Okay, so that one we potentially get off of our back though in terms of having to support it in 2027.
Yep.
So now going on to TID five, that also is, currently, we're having to pay money into that one.
Yep.
Do we have a, a projection on the end of when we're gonna, that one's coming off of life support, or?
Uh, that one's interesting. So Eller's actually has that coming off of general fund support after 2022. So if you look at the cash flow on page one sixty-nine, you can see that they're showing the advances from the general fund for '21 and '22, and then, um, going away in 2023. So that one, that one's quite a bit upside down. That one's in the red right now, um, but it is projected to cash flow quite a bit. It's kind of, we're gonna reverse course here and start to grow through the 2030s.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Yep.
What, what's making TID five grow?
Yeah, I wonder what we have for project projection in there. So the Tyce Building is gonna come on.
Yeah, Tyce Building, more than likely, um.
The Doran, Doran Project, if that.
The Doran Project, if that goes.
Yep.
That, we've not heard much of that in a while.
I think they maybe come in this.
That's great.
Yeah. Yeah.
This, this one looks to be projected less conservatively than TID four. I mean, they're projecting increases and increments right along.
TID five is still very fresh. I mean, it's, TID five was only formed in...
2017.
Twenty, yeah, I was gonna say 2017, 2018. So really, it's in its preschool phase right now.
I know, but I'm just looking at their tax increments that are in the first column and they continue to increment, whereas TID four, they just basically froze after 2025.
Yeah, they were a lot more conservative than the other ones. And this one, it looks like they're projecting at least a small percentage of growth each year. Not sure why, why they would have done that.
The only thing I can think of is that there is, there's a lot more and TID five is a lot larger than TID four. And there's just a lot more projects that are, that could happen in TID five as opposed to TID four. So I think that's why you see the larger increase.
Okay.
So, yeah, and I think that's an important thing to note is all the TIDs are being supported by the general fund. It's not necessarily ideal. But we do have our cash flow showing that, you know, there's going to be, at least in the case of four and five, a payback. And then in three, we're going to get pretty darn close. And if things happen a little bit better, we'll probably get even closer, if not all the way. So it's a good or bad thing, it's subjective certainly. But yeah, I mean, it's, it would be helpful if, if they were self-supporting and we could take those off the general fund levy and that would help the tax rate obviously. So, um, yeah, as far as the budget for 2022, there isn't a whole lot of interesting things going on in the TIDs. They're obviously paying their debt service. And then the couple of projects that I mentioned, but those are already borrowed for. So those are the things that are going to be happening next year. And it did include, if you're, if you're wound up after the meeting and you need to calm down or fall asleep, you can read my little report on how tax increment financing tax rates are calculated. It's very, very confusing. Lisa and I had a couple of discussions on it and I just decided that I was just going to write it out and let you guys share in the confusion.
Did you fall asleep while you were...
Yeah, yeah. It's very complicated. There's a lot of concepts of fairness and equal taxation that work into this and the state legislature and all of their thought process and changes that go into this. So you can read through that. But I think the thing to know is that TIF districts do create a, a tax burden on everybody. And so you can see in this one, what page is this? 154. You know, an average assessed home got a $123 tax bill because of the TIF districts last year and we're projecting 159 this year. So it all, it's a, there is an impact that happens. And so it's kind of a confusing way that they go about it, but that's how that kind of works out to be at the end. So...
So to be taxed less or taxed more?
It's taxed more, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely. And unfortunately, the way too it works is if one jurisdiction and the entire county has a TID, it impacts everybody because of, we're, we're part of the county jurisdiction, which is impacted by the creation of a TID in a different municipality. So it kind of creates this interesting ripple effect that's very confusing. But, yeah.
Martin, does your memo explain, delve into that issue?
Yep.
Believe it or not, I, I can't wait to read that.
Me either.
I, yeah, I actually, I spent actually quite a decent amount of time trying to...
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited to read this one.
Yeah.
I did my TID research back in 2017 with TID five, so I'm curious.
And like I said, Lisa and I kind of talked about it. I'd never, I'd never worked in a community where I was this close to, you know, figuring out the financial management part of the TID. And so from my own knowledge, I kind of dug into it and basically regurgitated everything I learned out of these three or four pages, so...
What pages are those, Martin?
It is page 151 through 154.
Okay.
That's only three pages, that's pretty good.
Yeah, so it's pretty succinct. So, uh, yeah, you can kind of see how all that stuff shakes out. And then, uh, yeah, it's all subjective and your opinions on TIF, but there you go. So the next few pages are the actual line items, which transpose all of those things that we kind of talked into actual budget form. Just a note on TID two, we closed that a couple of years ago. We still have a few expenses that were shown in 2020 and we have to show the 2020 year as part of this budget, so that's the only reason why that's in here. But yeah, the rest, you can see the cash flows are in there and then the line items. Is there any other question on TIF districts? Now we'll continue on to the utilities.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Since TID four, you have budget notes under TIF incentives. Uh, I don't know what page it is, I'm still on the old budget. It was 153 in the old budget. I'm sorry I didn't read every page of the new budget.
So this is what, TIF four you said?
TIF four, capital improvements category. You had a 2022 leap-in, total 800,000 plus 5% interest due November 1st. Rosewood Apartments, total 750,000 plus 4% interest due November 1st. Was this a value we supplied inside the TIF as, as an incentive or what was that?
Rosewood Coil Apartments.
Yeah. So, yeah, those amounts are drawn from the TIF agreements that the village made with, with the individual developments, yep. Yeah, so each one of those has a, an agreement that spells out how that revenue obligation is to be paid back to them.
It's page 166.
So that's our payment to them?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, yep, that TIF incentives line item, that 114,300, that's what we're projecting that we're going to be paying in TIF incentives to those developments.
Page 11?
It's page, uh...
153.
It's 166 in the new version. Yeah, okay.
153.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, I'm still...
Yeah, sorry I didn't read every page of the new one.
No, it's fine. Anything else, any other questions on TIF? All right. All right, so water utility. So a couple of things on the 22 proposed budget for the water utility, a couple of highlights. So I think it's, it's good to know that water utility has, has really historically been very well funded. It's got 3.3 million in, in cash reserves right now. But it does have a, a number of projects over the next couple of years, about $3 million in capital project expenditures between '21 and '23. And so I'm going to go to the next page here. So this was part of page, where can it go? Cut out there. It'll be page 178, yep. So this is part of our financial management plan, the utilities portion. And so you can see, if you look at capital improvements, which is kind of towards the bottom here, you can see kind of the, the number of about the 3 million that we're looking at, 3 million plus in capital improvements that are being projected out for the next couple of years. And so in Ellers' analysis of, of the financial management plan and looking at this, they're looking at keeping things the same from a rate perspective in 2022. So nothing would change from that. But they're looking at potentially a 12% increase being recommended in 2023. And we'll, we can evaluate that next year. But that 12% increase would be to, you know, make sure that we're staying ahead of the game on capital improvements and any ongoing operating costs. And so once we kind of get past those CIP items, you know, they kind of plugged in here a $200,000 a year in capital improvements, obviously subject to change. But once we get that 12% in, they're projecting out just really a 3% kind of cost of living increase to, to user rates every couple of years. In fact, one is every four years there. So that's something to keep in mind as we look at the utility, the water utility budget. Now a 12% increase in water rates is about a $2.82 per month increase on an average home. So it's not, it's not nothing obviously, but it's not hugely significant. So that's something that we'll, we'll have to, to keep an eye on and we'll reevaluate next year. So with that, with planning to do a rate increase in 2023, we have to go to the Public Service Commission in 2022 and ask for that rate increase. Because the water utilities in Wisconsin are governed by the Public Service Commission. And it's a very in-depth process. It's very, takes a lot of time and it's very complicated. And so we've set $10,000 aside in the 22 budget for Ellers to assist us with that application process. And so that will probably take almost the whole year probably to get through. I did want to point out it took us 18 months to get through that application process. So depending on what they find and what they want to look at, kind of at the whim of the Public Service Commission. So we'll look at that next year as potentially a 23 increase. But as far as the actual 22 budget for the water utility, outside of that $10,000 for rate application assistance, things are largely the same, largely tracking the same. So we're not looking at any rate changes for 2022. So revenues are, are staying pretty much the same. And then really it's just employee costs, salary and benefits costs that we all talked about earlier that are impacting the general fund that are also obviously carrying through with the water utility personnel. But otherwise, operationally, things are, are staying the same. And actually, the budget looks a lot different than our other budgets because that's what the Public Service Commission wants. So if you can follow it.
Good luck.
Good luck. But, uh, yeah, so just to really what it does is it breaks out a lot of the, the employee costs into different functions and we have to kind of track all of that information, so... Any questions on the water utility budget? All right. So moving on to sewer, page 189. So a lot of things that can be said about the water utility are pretty similar about the sewer utility. Again, it's, it's, has a very, historically been very well funded. It actually has about $5.2 million in it, in cash reserves. But we are expecting some very, very significant capital improvement expenses over the next four years. Upwards of about $15 million in upgrades for predominantly the wastewater treatment plant. And so we'll be using a good chunk of that cash that we've, we've saved up to, to support that project as well as a combination of debt service. So similar to the water utility on page 191, you can see kind of our multi-year cash flow for the utility. And you can see up here at the top, they have penciled in a 7% increase in rates for '22, '23, and '24. And they're proposing that to support the, the utility as it undertakes the amounts to be $15 million in, in capital improvement projects. So making sure that we don't get behind and that we stay on top of things. And again, that, that 7% amounts to, I think it's $1.81 per month on an average, average home. So again, it's not anything, it's not nothing, but it's, you know, in combination with water utility and the tax rate, it's, it's something certainly to think about.
And I think it should be noted, excuse me, but should be noted both the water and the sewer utility. I don't believe we have, or I know we have not done any rate increase, I believe, in over 10 years.
Mm-hmm.
So like we've talked about before, it's going to have to be a little catch-up, but we want to get to a point where the rate increases, just like everything else increases over time, at a more manageable level, not, you know, 7% every year for three years.
Yeah, you don't want to be...
Trying to catch up.
Right, you want to knock these out and you don't want to be in a position and having to do a 60% rate increase. Or I've heard of a community doing a 250% rate increase.
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
We don't want to do that. It's always better to kind of knock out those small percentages every couple of years.
The concern, and I've raised this before, the concern that I have with this, for the sewer utility, is it really doesn't take into account the huge project that we have in the early 2030s on our plate, which is larger than what you have five years down the line for a project.
Well, and...
And we're nowhere near the money we need for that.
Keep in mind that that, that 2030 project is probably going to slide over time. You know, that's, uh, the way the capital, uh, the capital improvement plan or the facility plan looked at that, you know, that, that larger secondary project, when you start getting out in that 10 to 20 years out, that starts to get a little more flexible on the timeframe that you have. So, you know, it's, yes, it's a very big project in, in our, in our future, but I wouldn't say it's definitely going to be 2030.
Okay. Like I said, just concerned that we're gonna have another big, you know, round of debt at that point.
Yeah, and that's why, you know, these cash flows during this financial management plan is, is so important because you can look out those 10 years in advance. And as it starts to kind of creep up on us, we can start to hopefully try to navigate the user rates so that we're, we're doing a little bit here and there rather than taking on a big hit at one point.
And maybe we look at 5% 2026 and 5% every year for, through 2030 to be able to have a little more cash on hand when that large project does hit. We got a lot of time to think about that though.
Yep.
Yeah, you can see right at the bottom, we have a, we have a huge, we do have a lot of cash in the sewer utility, but that is going to be drawn down, you know, almost two and a half million dollars by the time we get through that kind of first phase of the planned project. But as far as the 2022 budget for the sewer utility, again, a lot can be said, that was said about the water utility can be said about the sewer utility. Things are pretty status quo for '22. No, but we'll, we'll look at the 7% increase possibly early next year and trying to incorporate that. But otherwise, from an operating expense, again, the employee salary and benefit costs are, are carrying through here.
Just one point that just came through and, and was too late to be able to bring, bringing in this, we'll be bringing it back when we bring the final. A very large chunk of what we spend annually is, is what we call on, on our hauling contract. And that is when the sludge, that, the thickened sludge that goes into this large tank, it's emptied twice a year and that, then that goes out and is land applied on fields. We've just learned recently, and our contract is... We've just learned recently, and our contract is up this next year, we just learned recently that both haulers that we've used in the past are nearly doubling their fees. We're at about three and a half to four cents a gallon right now. We'll be at about seven to eight cents a gallon under the new contract. So I'll be bringing that back as, as an amendment under our contract. We have plenty of funds obviously to handle it, but it's just something we're going to have to include. Huh?
Just more good news.
Sludge. It's just fun to say sludge.
We need a sludge fund?
Very good, nice.
Thank you.
So are there any other questions on sewer? Again, I think what the theme of the budget is, has been operating is, is pretty consistent year over year here. And just the increases in the employee's salary and benefit costs. And then we got a couple of small fiduciary funds, not very consequential for the budget, but we got to report them. You can see those, those here. So the last two pages, um, is it two pages? Two pages is the twenty twenty-two budget summary. So the previous two hundred pages all condensed into two pages. So this is what we have to create and publish under state law as part of our budget process. So that's what this looks like. And I guess if there's no other questions or anything else, I guess what we'd be looking for is a motion from the board to, to publish this and to move forward with the budget process. And we'll come back on November fifteenth for the public hearing and the potential approval of the budget.
Thanks for all your work this was a time.
Yeah.
No, and the, I give a lot of credit to the department heads. They, they put together very, very good budgets. Made Lisa and mine's life very, a lot easier, so it's a good team effort.
All right, so Martin, Martin made the motion for us. We want to start it off, give a second. Amanda?
I'll make the motion.
And Carlene? Any other discussion? So we'll bring this back November fifteenth. We'll have the public hearing and potentially we will approve the budget.
Yep, and if there's any final adjustments or anything we need to make, we can make it that night. Certainly there'll probably be a couple of small things that come up in between that we can address at that meeting. And we'll have the, the actual levy amounts from the other taxing jurisdictions at that time so we can know what the, the full picture of that will look like.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. All right, Martin, you're all set.
Thank you.
Uh, we're on to ten, is new business? We have none. Eleven, future agenda items. Anything from board members? Okay, twelve, take adjournment. Take a motion, Jerry? Amanda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned, thank you.